Good evening and welcome to the Exeter School Board's October meeting. The focus of today is to discuss the return, the in-person return to school option being presented by our team. I am pleased to introduce several members of the senior leadership team in the board. Joining us today is Esther Asbell, Associate Superintendent of SAU 16. She's also the superintendent's representative to the Exeter School District. Steve Adler, the principal of Main Street School. Drew Bearstow, the principal of Lincoln Street School. Beth Catterett, the Assistant Principal of Main Street School. Beth, Deanna Donnelly, the Assistant Principal of Lincoln Street School. And Renee Bennett, who is the Director of Special Education. Joining me also from the board, Don Bowens, who is the Vice Chair. Sarah Edwards is trying to make it. She hasn't joined us yet, but she's also on the board. Patty Soretta is on the board as well, and Patrick O'Day. My name is Neil Blaken and I'm the Chair. This evening, we're going to go right to the presentation by Steve Adler and Drew Bearstow. Afterwards, we'll have public input. And by that, the public can ask questions through the chat function. We would have preferred to have done this more directly with voice, but given the large number of attendees, the only way to really do it was through this function. So with that, I'm going to pass over to Esther, Steve, and Drew.
Can I interrupt for a second? Sorry, I'm getting a number of texts that no one can get in still. Do we see people in there?
It looks like there's 105 attendees, but the number keeps going up. I mean, I would, I'd also have a little concern that if people are trying to get on and having difficulties that we not rush starting the presentation, give a few minutes so people can deal with their technical difficulties and get on.
Yeah, I think there might be, everyone's trying to join at once.
Yeah.
The number's going up, so people are, that link is active. So maybe we should wait till that number relax a minute.
Sure, we'll wait a couple of minutes and just get going.
Well, I'll work on sharing my screen and making sure it's all ready to roll if you're okay with that while we're waiting.
That's good.
Can you guys see that all right?
Yep.
All right, you are having technical difficulties. Please stand by.
So I don't.
Okay, hold on. Drew?
Yes.
I'm hearing none of your fourth grade teachers are able to get on.
I think you just got to give people a minute.
That's what I'm telling.
They just have to, they just have to keep trying because.
The numbers keep growing.
The number keeps going up, so I think it's, I'm hoping that's what it is because I don't think it's a glitch if we have 141 people that are able to get in.
I told them we're holding and not presenting to just keep trying.
Drew, can you stop sharing because I can't get out to check? I'm.
I think we had, was it 200, 300 last time? Is that right? I think it was, right?
People are saying that the posting isn't there. I just double-checked. They got to go to school board. I'll put it in the chat, but the posting is on the webpage.
I think you can maybe see some of the comments that there was, it looks like somehow the Lincoln Street School website link wasn't working properly, but the Main Street one was. It's what some people are reporting, so that may be part of the issue.
I posted a link to the the notice, so I wonder what's going on there.
Not sure. I can't, I went in and tried to, it's an automatic passcode thing is on all and I can't take it off. So that's on all the webinars.
You know, people seem to be getting in now.
Must be some way people are signing in because some people are asked for a passcode and some aren't, so I'm not sure about that. It looks like you can get in without a passcode because I don't.
Oh, it's, is it 177? It's gaining ground, so maybe, maybe we start getting going pretty soon. Maybe it's just a matter of just being patient.
I still can't get Sarah in though.
I'm texting her now.
I just texted Dave to see. It says I've already added Sarah Edwards. I can't add her again.
She's, she did not receive, she said the links by email. So this, the number of participants climbing quicker now, so it's, the system's clearing, it seems.
Can you just give Sarah one of our links and then she can just change her name when she gets in?
It's a panelist one, so I can't, I don't think.
No, yeah, I think you can, but then it just, she, like if you gave her mine, it would just show up as another Molly O'Keefe.
Can you send her your link, Molly, your email? Because I don't get an email. I don't get an invite.
Oh, yeah, I'll send it to her.
So we're about 200, 197. How would you feel about getting started, anyone?
Yeah, I think, I think the emails have slowed down. I haven't gotten any additional. Are people all right on your end? People that were texting and stuff, have they gotten in?
The only one I've got is, I just told them Molly's going to send her Sarah link, but that's, that's the only one I have. Now I've done or.
Yeah, assuming that they're getting in, but that they did need a passcode. And that it sounds like Steve's, Steve's link was fine, but the one on the SAU 16 on the posting is, seemed to be working without a passcode. So I don't know what else we could do to remedy at this point. I think people are just connecting with others and getting on, so.
They just got Molly's link, so hold on a second.
Yep, she's in now. I can see her picture.
All right, Molly O'Keefe, two of them. All right, good. Let's, what do you say we get going?
Yeah, I just got one comment. I just want to share if people are listening. Someone texted in that they had to update their Zoom app and then got in fine. So you can also watch on the Blue Hawk Media Facebook group. Allison Battle said she, it's on the Blue Hawk Media Facebook group as well as one person updated their Zoom app and then got in fine. So it's a couple tips.
All right.
Can I ask a quick question? So people don't need a password? Is that right to get on the link that was posted?
They don't, people have, people, some people said they did, some people said they didn't. Some people updated their Zoom app. I think it's a variety of user issues. But we're up to 204 people, so definitely people are getting in.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, we've got to love technology. Thanks for everyone being patient.
So we're ready to roll?
We are.
Right. Can everyone see? All right, so to give you a brief overview of our back-to-school presentation, we're going to go over the survey data from the preliminary survey that we sent out a few weeks ago and share the school demographics and the school space that we have. We're going to give you an overview of the recommended scenario for our return, including some sample schedules and the benefits and challenges of the scenario. We'll go over the school operations, including health and safety, financial implications of the return, in addition to the timing of the return.
So in making the considerations for this plan, first and foremost, we recognize that we're in the middle of a pandemic. All of us in the school would love to be back in person the way we've always been. We will look forward to when this pandemic is over. Some of our guiding principles are to provide a safe environment so the students may re-enter school following the CDC and the NHDHS, HHS guidelines, where we want to maximize time for in-person learning and ensure high quality of remote learning also as that continues, and to implement the competency-based education principles. And we're always looking to ensure equity of learning for all students.
So to go over the survey data, when we sent out the preliminary survey, we just asked to get a general sense of where our community was. And between both schools, both Lincoln Street and Main Street School, it was pretty close to spot-on. 75% of the families were looking to have their children come to school in person, while 25% were looking for remote instruction or remote learning. So that, this was Lincoln Street School's specific data, and here's Main Street School's specific data. Again, hovering right around 75, 25.
And then as we looked at, the other information was, what are the factors that we have for determining the available school space? We found that we could not have more than eight to 10 students per classroom in order to follow safety guidelines. We also continue to follow the state governor's executive order that requires special education services to be offered in person, requiring classroom space. And lastly, we're committed to continuing to have Great Bay kids be housed at Lincoln Street School so that that childcare is still available.
So when you look at the breakdowns with thinking about our total school enrollment and break down to the specific numbers, when you look at the 75, 25 breakdown, this is what you have. So I'll start with Main Street School first. So the total enrollment at Main Street School is 391 students. So 75% of those students is 293 students, while 25% is just under 100. You look at Main Street School and after what Steve was just sharing, there are 21 classrooms available at Main Street School for those 293 students. A total minimum number of classrooms needed for full person, a full in-person instruction would be 30 because we're sticking to that eight to 10 students per cohort. We would need six remote student, remote teachers to accommodate the 98 students who were looking for remote instruction. So we would need 10 additional staff members to be able to accommodate a full in-person and while still providing the remote option. Same goes, it's the same breakdown for Lincoln Street School. We have more students, 437. So you can see the 75, 25% breakdown. We also have 21 classrooms available. We would need 33 total classrooms to do full in-person instruction while still needing six remote teachers. So we would need a total of 12 teachers. So between both schools, that would require an additional 22 teachers to be able to do full in-person instruction while still offering a remote option.
So the, the bottom.
Sorry, Steve. There we go.
Thanks, Drew. So the bottom line is we do not have the space for returning in full because of the require, the safety requirements of keeping the appropriate physical distance in between students and classrooms. Nor do we have the teaching capacity. We would need to hire 22 additional teachers as well. So for us, that means that we had to look at other options for how to bring back in person. We considered multiple review, the, both the pluses and minuses. The one that we are presenting has students can choose to stay remote five days per week and follow a similar schedule as the current. Or students can attend on alternating days. We would have one cohort of students, one group of students attending on Mondays, Wednesdays, and alternating Fridays, and another group of students attending on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and then the opposite alternating Friday. We would keep families with the same schedule to ensure that they don't have one child on Monday and another child on Tuesday, which would be really difficult. We recognize that importance. And that would be our primary way in terms of determining. That would be the one thing we'd make absolutely certain we would do in terms of selecting the days for who would get which one. The schedule for the in-person was very similar to the schedule that we've been following for remote. Instructional time would be the same, nine to 2:15, and we'd be following a similar schedule as we followed for the remote. We're expecting both arrival and dismissal to be significantly longer. We would have buses and parents dropping off at around 8:30, and then we would, that would be a staggered start. And then buses and parents would be picking up starting at 2:15. And again, we do anticipate that this will be a longer process, given the number of parents who will be driving. And this is just another way that Drew and I selected, just to give you a sense of the schedule. On the Blue Week, the Group A would come on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And then on the following week, the White Week, Group B would come on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And so again, you'd see that it'd be either every two or three days per week that students who are intending in-person would come to school.
So the benefits of this plan, this is when we're considering all the different options that we, we were exploring. This alternating day plan provides choice for families. They can choose in-person or they can still choose remote. We're hoping it reduces childcare demands for families as, as much as possible. It provides a full day of learning with a teacher and with their classmates, which also provides some social emotional learning time, times to be, time to be with friends and peers. We, as we were mentioning at the outset, this model doesn't require additional educational positions, so we won't be requesting additional teachers or staff. And it keeps the number of days exposed to a cohort to a minimum in terms of the health and safety guidelines. Children are exposed for just less time to others. And then finally, it's, this option provides an option that is less screen time than the current remote model that we're, we're using right now.
The impact of selecting this plan, first and foremost, some of the in-person and/or remote students will be reassigned to a new teacher. Current, you know, we are, if you have a family selects to be remote and the teacher they've been working with is assigned to work in person, they would have to switch. And similarly, if a teacher's going remote and a family selects to be in-person, they would have to be reassigned. Based upon the data we had with the 75, 25, our best guess would, we would probably have about six to seven teachers in each grade level who would be in-person and two teachers in each grade level who would be remote. Currently, we have about nine grade levels except for kindergarten, which has a, in each grade level. Those numbers could change depending upon what options parents select in the next survey we send out. We'll be making classrooms balanced, which is always important to ensure the quality of the educational opportunity for all students. And we will be asking parents to commit to which choice they want to make. We cannot let them know who the teacher will be until we know what the parents are, what the decisions our parents are making.
So some additional impacts of the alternate day plan include recess space. We'll need to make sure that our students stay in the cohorts that we assign them to, so that includes both, both lunch and recess. So that means we need to break down our recess space into however many different sections we need for a grade level of recess. So for example, Lincoln Street School, we may, might need eight different sections that each group cohort of kids spends time in free each recess. That will, that'll be a challenge once we get to winter and we can't use certain portions due to safety concerns from snow and ice. In-person students may have some kind of an adjusted schedule to accommodate for, for being in-person recess needs and lunch needs and things. Our community care centers that are housed at our schools will have to end to accommodate for the in-person students. We need to use all this space in the school to have, bring kids in each day. And then one concern that we have is that just the consistency of staffing and lack of substitutes that we have in the district. If, you know, a teacher or a staff member is exposed, then unfortunately, they'll need to quarantine for two weeks. And so if we can't find a substitute, that could be a challenging situation.
In terms of the day-to-day operations, the safety protocols, you'll see here are the ones we already have in place for students who are attending in the community care center or through individualized needs. All students will be asked to wear masks. They're mandatory. Desk will be six feet apart, which is why we can only have eight to 10 students in each cohort. We'll have assigned seating. In terms of classroom supplies, students will have the individual containers. They won't be sharing supplies. And then Drew mentioned this, students will stay in the cohort, so when this group goes out for recess, they will not be playing with other classes. They'll be playing with the students in their class only. For cleaning, we will be disinfecting high-traffic and touch areas throughout the day. Vital oxide in each classroom, and then every night, there'll be electric static spraying as well. We have had the air systems updated in both buildings. All the filters have been upgraded to Mur 13, and as well as ionization filters are being used.
Kate, would you like, or Steve, would you like to introduce Caitlin?
Sure. So I'm pleasure to introduce Caitlin Anglia. Caitlin's our new school nurse, and she's going to walk through all the health considerations, which are really important for parents to know as students return in person. And Caitlin, I don't know if you're there.
I'm there, yep.
Fantastic. Good to see you, Caitlin.
All right, so just wanted to touch on when staff and students are excluded from school, the process that goes into that and what it takes in order to return to school. So even before the symptomatic and confirmed with COVID, daily, we are doing screenings for student and staff. As a parent, if you are screening your child each morning and you identify that your student has one of the symptoms that are listed on this screening, we ask that you stop, keep your student at home and contact either me or Pam at Lincoln Street to kind of get some further instructions. So what we'll do is help guide you on whether or not your student needs to be tested for COVID. There's two scenarios here. So if your student wakes up with anything like runny nose, cough, shortness of breath, all of the COVID symptoms that are listed, we will ask that you either get a doctor's note from your pediatrician stating that this is related to a previous condition, such as asthma or seasonal allergies. If it's not, we will have you seek COVID testing. You can have your student return to school with a negative COVID result or that doctor's note saying that this is related to a pre-existing condition. So that's the whole first part of it. The second part is if you go and seek COVID testing and you're confirmed positive with COVID-19, you are asked to stay home for 10 days since your symptoms first started. And that you can return to school, you have to be 24 hours fever-free, off fever-reducing medicines, and your symptoms have to be improved. If you are identified as needing COVID testing and for whatever reason you don't feel like you want to go that route, you're welcome to quarantine at home for 10 days before you can return to school. If you are asymptomatic but test positive, again, you're quarantining for 10 days, assuming that you remain asymptomatic through that period. If you were to develop symptoms, then the 10 days starts from that date. If you are exposed to somebody who is confirmed with COVID-19, we're asking that you quarantine for 14 days, assuming that you remain asymptomatic. If you develop symptoms while you're quarantining, then you then switch to the 10, an additional 10 days from when you developed your symptoms. And then we're asking all students and staff that they quarantine for 14 days if they travel outside of New England, and that starts on the day of return. And you cannot test out of a quarantine, so anyone who's planning any travel just needs to take that into account. We are working closely with our senior leadership team and the Department of Health to get these guidelines. In the event that a student who tests positive in, who's in-person, the parent or the state notifies us of the positive test, we then notify our school admin and senior leadership and they. senior leadership and they notify the specific school of the positive case. We are working closely with the Department of Health to then contact trace which cohort has been affected and those parents and staff will be notified specifically on when to start their 14-day quarantine. If we're closely following the cohort guidelines, which we are doing as of right now, that it would just affect that specific cohort.
Thank you so much, Caitlin. I really appreciate your expertise and jumping in here at the the last minute. Big question that I've been asked from a few different parents has to do with the how we handle academically when students are quarantined. So if a student was attending in person at school and they are required to quarantine for that 14-day period that Caitlin was just explaining, it would be treated as as a sick day has been treated in the past. So they would be given work or assignments to complete while they're at home as their teacher and their class are continuing on as normal in the classroom. So what we would not have, we would not have simultaneous in-person and like a live streaming of the of the class, if you will, for while the kids are at home. That is given, of course, that the teacher or the other, the rest of the class is still feeling well and still in school. If the entire cohort, including the teacher, needs to be quarantined, then and the teacher was still feeling well, then that would then be become a remote classroom for that period of time with that cohort of children. Obviously, we want to do whatever we can to keep our the education rolling. And we just have to work within the guidelines that we have to make the best choices.
We just wanted to touch on the transportation safety. We had some parents who felt still needed the bus. So if students are riding on the bus, it's we do ask that the guardians be with them at the bus stop. They will do a screening prior to getting on the bus. We also are recommending bus monitors for every bus to reinforce riding safety and to ensure the to support the physical distancing as well as the screening. And we won't have more than 22 students on a bus again for the physical distancing needs.
So with the number of layers that we've presented here that will be in place between whether it's the bus riding, the screenings, the mask wearing, obviously, we'll be instilling proper hand washing and hand sanitizing just in the air filters and air exchange. It's just layer after layer that when combined make a obviously a thicker, more robust protective layer that will promote health and safety for our kids and our staff while they're in the school.
So we did look at the financial implications of this plan. We looked at busing costs, the cost of hiring bus monitors, the additional cleaning costs and substitute costs as well. You'll see from all of these that that we don't expect an enormous impact on the overall budget. Some of these will go higher and some will be going lower.
So the the bus ridership, for example, to spot where Steve was saying, we don't anticipate going over budget and on the bus line. We did that preliminary survey that I mentioned earlier in this presentation. And of all of the in-person requests at both Lincoln Street and Main Street School, you can see Lincoln Street has ninety four bus riders of those in-person students and Main Street School has eighty four. So that would be approximately five buses per day that we would need between Lincoln Street and Main Street School. So that's five for for both schools at the 22 students per bus. The cost per bus per day is $348.58. That coupled with a bus monitor for each bus is an additional $85,000. So the total cost would be $308,000. Our total transportation budget was $424,000, six hundred, $424,622. So as you can see, we're well under the budget that was originally budgeted for this particular school year.
Talk about what would need to happen for us to return in person. We will be sending out a survey tomorrow, asking for a binding commitment. Will be asked that that be returned by Monday, October nineteenth by noon. That'll give the rest of this week as well as through the weekend to complete the survey. It's not a long survey. We'll be evaluating responding to the staffing needs as we look at the survey. We need to have time to set up classrooms. Once we have the plan ready to roll, we need, we will need to assign students to classrooms and share as parents what that assignment will be as well as which days of the week, certainly no later than October thirtieth, we hope sooner. And we also need to plan and organize the bus routes. And then we need to rewrite our school schedules for in-person within the framework of which we've described in order to address some of the recess needs and lunch needs that'll happen as we come back to in-person.
So we just wanted to conclude the presentation with with message and a reminder that we are we're in the middle of this pandemic and we would all very much like to be back in school with your children, with the staff as as typical. That's what we all want. And we recognize that there is no good solid solution other than that that fits everyone and everyone's needs. And we just ask for the children that no matter how you feel about this plan, that you consider portraying a sense of positivity for the kiddos. So they can feel good about going to school in whichever way you end up choosing as a family. They see you, they hear you. And we just, we want to be with your kids and we want them to be as as healthy and educated as possible. And we just ask for your help in doing so.
Is that the end of your presentation, Drew?
That is the conclusion. Yes.
My thinking is, why don't we start reading, go to public input. If anyone has an objection, I'll start reading the questions, which I'll hand off to the team. And then afterwards, the board can have a discussion as well, if that makes sense to people. I'm trying to scroll down through the initial part.
I think your first question, Neil, is around the six seventeen time.
Thank you. What percentage of families did not respond or felt unable to respond to the survey? Esther, is it customary to read the person's, the questioner's name, or should they that remain private? Is there any, any etiquette to this?
It's usually, we like to just read the person's name. So for the Gemma people listening, they know who's asking the question and then write the read the question exactly as presented.
So that was from Andrew Most. So the what percentage of families did not respond or felt unable to respond to the survey? Anyone?
I can say that we had. I'm going to pull it off the top of my head, but I think it was about 441 respondents to the preliminary survey. There are about 447 students enrolled at Lincoln Street School. So it's a pretty good representation. Admittedly, the, you know, the data isn't 100% clean. There are a couple of people that entered the information twice, things like that. That's again, why we wanted to make sure we said it's a preliminary survey and it wasn't binding necessarily.
Maggie O'Grady asks, sorry.
We had 378. We currently are just under 400 students. We did take out our duplicates as we look through the survey. So we were not missing that many. And being that the purpose of the survey was to really help us to create an initial plan, it's the next survey that'll be that where we'll really need to get an answer from every family.
Thank you. Maggie O'Grady comments, helpful to have some metrics in a plan formulating now. Thanks. Still confused why these calculations needs assessments couldn't have been done before the fall.
I can take that one. Two primary reasons. One was the equipment we needed to ensure safety, such as the Mur thirteen filters and the ionizers. When we ordered those and the board approved the order of those late June, they were backordered and they were not in stock. We finally did receive them. Actually, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was September-ish. I don't know the exact date. I apologize for that. As well as working through, we had about 185 staff in SAU sixteen that applied for either FMLA or ADA accommodations. The ADA does not have a specific timeline on it. And it did require some staff to make doctor's appointments and get physician notes, et cetera. So as we continue to work through that list still, as more come in and as people appeal the decisions that were made that just as a process that takes some time, we're confident that we have the staff to open Lincoln and Main Street now, but it did take some time to work through some of those requests for accommodations.
Thank you. Rhonda, I think it's Zabielski asks, I wonder why we couldn't consider an alternating schedule of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday, so that each cohort group would have four days between contact. Any thoughts?
We were trying to have not have long spreads between the times when students would have contact with school, with teachers, and when they would not. So we want, we set up alternating days to try to provide as much consistency as we could.
Hold on one second. From Jennifer, if all families, family choose, all families choose remote, do they still have access to their child's regular teacher or would they now have a different newly hired remote teacher? Conversely, if you choose to send your child to school, how can you be assured that your child would have their regular teacher and not a newly hired teacher? Thank you.
So we won't be hiring any new teachers for the in-person or remote model. So we'll use the teachers that we currently have on staff to do so. We don't, we don't have a plan to hire new people. There is, it is true, though, that we can't guarantee that every every student is going to be able to stay with their current teacher. Just inevitably with the number of shifting and the numbers, that's not something that we can, we can say will guarantee to happen. So I hope that answers your question.
Just to add on the survey, there are three options on the survey. One is to pick remote. One is to pick in person and the third is to say that staying with their current teacher is a priority and they are open to doing either remote or in-person.
From Talia King, what is the reason for still keeping the class size so small? Where is that guidance coming from?
So in order to keep kids six feet apart in the classrooms and when you measure out the the classroom space in order to have them six feet apart, that's, that's we can fit eight to 10 kids in a classroom while maintaining that physical distance.
That's CDC guidance, isn't it, Drew?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, which is, I think, actually expanded that, I mean, I think the more they've looked at it, the more they're, they think it's actually more than sixty. That's the minimum distance, I think. From Caitlin Baldwin, how can we ensure we stay with our teacher? Our teacher is a great fit for our student. Also, if our students have already been in an alternative program for remote learning, Action Kids, will return lineup with their semester?
So I think Steve.
The way that they, that in answer to Caitlin's question, if Caitlin, if which any parent who wanted to stay with their teacher selected that as a priority, if they're willing to be either in-person or remote, but they, we can't guarantee which way that teacher is going to be assigned.
From Caroline, why, why not have Wednesday be the alternating day so that each group would have the opportunity to have their three day in a row and always have two days in a row?
To go back to what Steve was mentioning before, trying to have the kids come in consistently consistently and not be have a long duration of time between them being in school. That was our goal with alternating day schedule.
Julia McPhee, can families be notified before they make their decision if their child's teacher will be teaching in person or remote? This would be great. This will greatly impact the decision I make for my children as changing teachers will be a great disruption to their school year.
So I'd refer back to Steve's answer before about the survey having that option.
The other piece, and I can really appreciate, you know, personally, I mean, I can really understand and commit, recognize the value of that because we work so hard to build relationships. Flip side is we cannot plan if we don't, if it continues to be a moving target. So we need a commitment, which is why we provided all three options.
Okay, now there's a someone to the identifying themselves as the real in-person. I think it's teacher, a question about there not being enough teachers and is that why we cannot open? And what is the difference between Exeter versus all of New Hampshire? So I guess the general question is what has been the challenge to reopening with not respect to not enough teachers?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the not enough teachers part, but in terms of our our issues between like why we can't open in full, all in person is due to the number of kids that we have in our schools and the space we have available.
And I think there's not a touch upon the superintendent has discussed before that some teachers sought accommodations for various, under various federal laws and others, other statutes or these permissions, if you will. And that's restricted in some ways our ability to to field teachers. Isn't that right?
Could be great. Maybe the not enough teachers maybe was was that referring perhaps to substitute teachers? Maybe that's where that's coming from.
From Andrew Most, please clearly articulate why for in-person students, cameras cannot be installed so the kids can participate remotely on days they are not in school.
I can answer that. I hope it's clear. RSA one ninety eight sixty five through sixty eight is data privacy, which includes FERPA amongst other things. One of them is video recording and we would be in violation if we videotaped students and teachers in in the classroom. I know there's a question further down that I can hopefully answer at the same time, whether as to whether we pursued a waiver to do that. The board could suspend the policy. However, it would still remain a statute and I'm just not familiar with getting a waiver for a law. Maybe it is possible. I've never pursued that. So that's the answer to that question at the same time.
Thank you. From Amy, what are in-person students doing on their days not in school?
So in-person students, when they're on their alternating off days, I guess, if you could call them, would be completing assignments that teachers would give them asynchronous learning is the the term that's popular right now to to say.
It's, it's also possible, but we still working on the schedule that some of the unified arts time might be scheduled on those alternate days as well.
From Caitlin Baldwin, is there a consideration of staying as is but changing to full in-person in the new year?
I can answer that. Initially, the our team did look at opening in that January of the new year for a variety of reasons, such as traveling over holidays and having some extra time to really prepare some of those things that were listed in the PowerPoint. However, when we have a 75% return of the community saying they want to be in school, we wanted to really respect that community and that community input. And so we felt that pushing something out till January would not be what the community was asking for. As we've gotten feedback that they would like to have started school yesterday if possible. As we've gotten feedback that they would like to have started school yesterday if possible. So trying to be respectful of that while adhering to safety guidelines. That's why we did not go with the January open date.
Thank you. From Imar Page, in order to select in person, will families be asked not to participate in outside school youth sports leagues?
That wasn't part of our decision-making. I don't expect us to make that decision.
Yeah, we, we don't have the right to tell families what to do outside of school.
From Caitlin Baldwin. I think I did that, didn't I? I think that's done. Sorry. Well, from Liz Visconti, would there be any times where my child would not be required to wear a mask, i.e. recess?
There would be mask breaks built into the school day, snack, for example. During recess, however, the kids would be required to wear their, their masks for a number of logistical reasons.
Real in-person teacher, will they be wearing masks for the entire in-person day, even in small cohort classrooms? I think you just answered that. From Abigail's all panelists, if a family chooses in person and then COVID numbers spike, will they have an option to switch to remote? Also, what happens if a child, parent, family refuses to wear a mask? How will mandatory mask wearing be enforced?
I'm going back through all the questions. So if a family chooses in person and then COVID numbers spike, will they have an option to switch to remote? We're asking that families commit to the choice that they make. If somebody refuses to wear a mask, so I'll go back to, wearing a mask is part of the social contract and part of the agreement to, to coming in and being a part of the in-school class. If they refuse to wear a mask, they won't be able to participate in the in-school classes.
Okay, this is from Amy. How would band instruction work for some, if some kids are in person and some are in home on the same day?
That's a great question. There are a number of logistics that we're working through. Band is certainly one of them. Like Steve was mentioning before, our unified arts schedule and how we're going to deliver everything. You know, this is all relatively new and we're working through some of those situations. So good question and we'll let you know as soon as we have an answer.
From Andrew Most, every time you have a potential exposure to COVID nineteen, you quarantine fourteen days. How is education handled during the quarantine? I think, didn't you say that it's a robust homework assignment? So their assignments are given?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and part of the beauty of seesaw is that there are a lot of assignments and things that are, are, can be assigned and you know, it's not the kind of thing where parents have to come to the school every time to pick up, you know, papers and books and things like that. So there's videos and there's this and that. There's a lot that we can do now. That's different than the way we would have handled it before.
So the next one's from the real in-person teacher. Critical of the Exeter schools saying they're different from the majority of the country in-person schools. And will this group on the meeting answer questions with direct responses or continue to, I guess I would say equivocate, pander to the, this is, and expresses this, it pandered to the ninety-nine point nine percent survival rate of the pandemic. This is an injustice to our children. I, I'm just going to say, you know, I know we're all frustrated. This is serious business and we're, we're doing the best we can. And I think we're doing a great job. From Amy, if in-person child needs to quarant, quarantine, do they get put into remote class or miss school for two weeks?
They, they are given assignments the same way they would if they were sick that the parents could work on. And as Drew shared before, they, they would be getting, think could get assignments through seesaw, they could access online learning, things like IXL, RAS Kids. But they would not be in a remote learning.
From Drew Gatto, hi, I believe there's a caveat for healthcare workers who are working and caring for COVID plus patients, COVID positive patients. Is that correct?
I'm going to lean on Esther for this one. I'm not.
Yeah, I, I'm, I can't answer that. I'm not aware. No, Caitlin, if you've heard anything on your conversations with Dr. Chan?
Yeah, that's fine. We don't have any, Dr. Chan hasn't put in any guidelines. If a parent works with COVID positive patients, we just ask that if the parent were to become positive, they would let us know so that we could deal with their students specifically. But no, they're welcome, their students are welcome in school if they work with that population of people.
From Katie, if your child has to quarantine for fourteen days or X days plus ten, at any point, are they able to do remote learning during that time? Anyway, sorry, never mind. Here's my answer. All right. Taria Malik to all panelists, will Great Bay kids still be aligned for after-school care or non-in-person days to help with remote learning for those parents who work full-time and can't help their students with remote learning?
If I'm understanding that question correctly, we'll still have a spot for Great Bay kids and the Lincoln Street School cafeteria and annex. And I would imagine that they would operate their program similarly to the way that they're doing it right now for the kids that are in person, but not in session.
Andrew Most notes that last year of classes needs to be figured out. It is fundamental to making this plan work without, I don't see this as practical. Okay, that's more of a statement, I think. Caitlin Desoy, so if they go Monday, Wednesday, and then Tuesday, Thursday, they are with a different online teacher or learning by themselves. That is even more lonely than online learning. Is anyone taking into account using the spaces like YMCA or other facilities that are supporting remote learning to just do all in-person learning? The mental health of our students is a tragic risk, tragic. The volume of depression is skyrocketing and only getting worse by the day. My second grader is in tears for hours daily. This is so detrimental. I'm devastated.
I can say that we looked into every space that we have available. I believe there's five classrooms that above the SAU offices in the Tuck building, which isn't enough to accommodate the needs that we have. And I, I mean, I agree. This is, this is a difficult set of circumstances that we're doing the best we can to try and accommodate for whatever we can. I, I totally hear you, Galen.
And my sense is that part of the reason why the district is trying to get back in person is precisely to try and help address the social, emotional learning and mental health issues. What is the point, the real in-person, what is the point of having layer after layer protection if you're, if you send students home with a runny nose? Your plan is more disruptive versus at-home learning?
All right, again, is, is to reduce the number of kids who are exposed to put at risk. It's to keep it as safe as we can within, within the pandemic and to follow the guidelines that, that we've been provided. Hopefully we can reduce the number of kids who will be have to be sent home.
Steve, can I just touch in on that for a quick second? Based on our meetings with Dr. Chan and the Department of Health, in this young elementary school age, kids are presenting with COVID with just a runny nose, a sore throat, or even just a headache. So unfortunately, based on the data that we've seen from Department of Health in the elementary school age, we have to send kids home based on that.
Challenge of being in the fall as well. I mean, the, the symptoms are very similar. Leroy Jenkins, what if a child riding a bus is positive for COVID? Doesn't that potentially affect all the cohorts? What would happen in that event?
That's the purpose of us recommending a bus monitor. The bus monitor, one of the tasks would be collecting or ensuring that the child had a screening form completed in the morning by a parent prior to boarding the bus. If somehow a student was riding the bus, it would affect the cohorts or the children that were on that bus. It's, that's true.
And I also, sorry, just say that if the buses, if kids are spaced six feet apart and are wearing their masks, then that's not considered a close contact and they would not have to quarantine based on that. The, the quarantining comes in for exposure when you are within six feet for more than ten minutes at a time. So if we're able to space the kids out on a bus, this wouldn't apply.
Next question is, and the real in-person teacher has already been answered about what would they be doing in alternating days, I believe. Andrew Most says, please consider another week, ten twenty-six, if you're looking for a binding commitment. Okay. Bethany Cunningham, if we choose in person, what does the child do on the days here in class? Just answered. I just lost my place. Sorry, I'm just, my after the public input, I like an opportunity for board members to, I'm sorry, yeah, that's for Patrick. I'm sure this has already been asked, but what is expected for students on the days home? We did that already. I know the superintendent mentioned it would be, not be hybrid. What is the anticipated initiation timeline? I think you guys covered that. This is from Meredith, but do you want to go over that again? The timeline for starting this up?
So we tried to put together what we thought was a reasonable timeline to put this together. We have the survey going out tomorrow, then giving parents through the weekend and returning it on Monday. Then we anticipate by October thirtieth, hopefully sooner, letting parents know their assignment, their teacher assignment, their days of the week. And then we anticipate implementing this plan November ninth. And that will give a couple of weeks for parents to then, from when they've been assigned to get ready for that implementation. So it's fairly tight. We kept it as tight as we could in recognition of, of the fact that we had seventy-five percent parents saying they wanted to return. And so in person, and so we looked at what was the reasonable timeline we could do to make that happen.
Thank you. Laurie Smith, I see that assignments will be sent home by October thirtieth. What date is planned for the date of school, of the date of in-school education? We just did that. Katie Adams, what's the approximate date? Okay, get that. Liz Visconti, when would you reevaluate for five days a week in person?
So we're looking at, well, obviously we'll, we'll be evaluating our, our programming, you know, from, from the get-go and but in terms of evaluating how things are going in a more formal way, we're looking at March. And then, but we're, we're looking for a commitment from, from folks as if we're going through the end of the year.
Jennifer Hipkis asks, how will you meet the academic demands in a half-time school schedule?
The plan that's being put forward has direct instruction from teachers on those days in person and then students working at home with the support of their families on those other days. And again, it certainly would love to be in person full. We don't have the capacity for now, but that's the best way that we could meet those needs in person right now.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, we've also talked about the smaller groups. So instead of having eighteen to twenty kids, you probably have seven to ten in your room. That smaller cohort obviously allows the teacher to go deeper and quicker. Managing seven to ten kids in a classroom setting than the eighteen to twenty. As well as, as you know, we're headed down the road of competency-based education. So we're really working hard to look at those eye, those anchor eye can statements. And also do some interdisciplinary teaching, which means when you're teaching social studies, you're also teaching ELA reading skills. You're teaching science, you're teaching math. So really working hard to combine those skills to hit those anchor can statements in those small groups.
Thank you. Robert DeLory notes, I have no questions. This presentation was excellent and well thought out. Thank you so much for your work. Katie Adams, would the in-person child, children be learning at home on their days, on their home days, or would they simply be off? I think we answered that. They'd be working. From Aaron Rugiero, I did not get the, I did not get a survey last time.
And I just jumped out there. Sorry, Neil, I just wanted to say if that is a good chance, that means that the email we have on file of yours may, you may have changed it or it might be misspelled or something. So if you could just call the main office and make sure that they have your right email, we'll fix that.
Thanks, Drew. Liz Visconti, what happens if you get more than seventy-five percent return to school result with the survey tomorrow?
We would adjust ours, we would look at the adjusting our assignments. We could, we know that we could go in either direction. This was to give us, we, also that's why the survey was a preliminary survey for beginning to look at planning.
Amanda Kelly, will medically complex children with IEPs currently in isolated spaces continue as such with the return to school?
The short answer is yes. As part of the return to school plan, I worked with the principals and we blocked off some learning spaces in classrooms that have exterior doors just for the safety of the students.
Brian Simpson, I think you answered the first, but I'm not sure about the second. Will there be a time to reevaluate this hybrid option? And two, how long is LSS committed to giving GBK their space?
I, I plan to, as long as it's open and available and, and we're able to accommodate for them. I think they're a great service to our community. So I hope to be able to have that for the duration.
Jennifer Hipkis, how will you assure in-person and remote curriculum will match the same rigor to make sure moving forward in new years, you don't have major gaps in learning between these two groups?
I think it's a great question. I think this is, this is a, a challenge that our, you know, our staff and we're wrestling with all the time. And, you know, I can tell you that if you look at the spring and the remote learning that occurred in the spring, you compare it with the remote learning that we have right now. And it's, it's a night and day difference. And I, I give a ton of credit to our teachers and curriculum directors that are, are working their tails off trying to make it better. So we'll continue to innovate and we'll continue to work hard and make this the best situation we can. As Steve said before, it's a, it's not an ideal situation, but we're doing the best we can to make the best, best of it.
The other thing I'll say is that one of the, one of, I'm proud of the teachers in Exeter for a lot of reasons. But one of the reasons I'm really proud of the, the staff we have is they do an incredible job collaborating together and sharing ideas and sharing curriculum. And I know they'll continue to do that.
Katie Adams, if in-person children are separated from their current teacher, would an effort be made to keep them with some of their classmates with a new teacher?
Yes.
Galaxy S ten E, from my understanding, no matter if I choose in-person or remote, my child may end up with a new teacher. Is that correct?
That is correct.
What is the expected initiative back in school that we answered that? Joy Tobin, do you anticipate a return to school on November second if all goes well? I think we answered that.
That, the return in person was November ninth.
Thank you. Jennifer Hipkis, will we be utilizing Plexiglas dividers in order to allow for some small group work, DI slash DI that isn't at their desk? Any Plexiglas drug dividers in order to allow for some small group work, DI that isn't at their desk?
So I, I anticipate the students working in various spaces in the classroom. That's part of the reason why we wanted to have a smaller number of cohort. Small, smaller number of students in the cohort so they can be working in various spaces and still have the six feet between them.
Okay. Ryan O'Brien, the first part was answered about the two days they're not in school. With remote, we are getting five full days a week, but it doesn't sound like that within person. So I think the question obviously is the disparity and I mean, is there more time of learning, I guess, in school with a remote than in a person?
Yes.
The other, the other piece you really, and I think this will be when parents make decisions, they, you really are going to need to look at how you, how your child learns and how they learn best. I mean, a, a small group of students in person with a, with a teacher for the two or three days a week may be far more effective than a remote or flip. Sometimes you do need to look at who the child is as a learner as well.
Pascal Kirian. Pascal Curian asked about implementation in terms of date, and that was answered. Katie Adams, what's the logic behind every other day rather than Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which would give longer breaks for symptoms to materialize and therefore be safer? So I guess the question is, is the schedule related to material, the manifestation of symptoms?
I would, I mean, I would say the schedule is more due to having the, as much consistency for the kids and minimizing the duration of time between when they're in school. Do you agree, Steve?
I would agree and, and all the decisions you're making, you're looking at both the educational benefits as well as the safety benefits.
Liz Visconti, how will you schedule specials if they will also be teaching remotely?
The specials are, it's, it's going to be a challenge to schedule those and have it be, you know, understandable for everybody, but we anticipate the specialists to be teaching both in person and remote at various times.
Kristen King, do you have an estimate on the percentage of children who will be reassigned teachers classes?
I don't know how to answer that. That's a tricky one. It will kind of depend on how the survey comes out that we send tomorrow.
Data dependent. Maggie O'Grady, thank you so much for the helpful answer about the filters and equipment and all your hard work. I really appreciate all you're doing and your willingness to answer my question. Nevett, this may have been asked already, but will you be able to know if our kids, teachers will be in school or via remote prior to deciding whether or not to keep our kids home or send them to school?
The, the again is that, that the choice on the survey will be either select remote, select in person or select that staying with the teachers a priority and you're willing to go either remote or in person. Cause we know that some people feel that way. Otherwise we, we can't make a guarantee.
Katie Adams, the long spreads are safer from a medical perspective, though. Nicole Missouri, we answered that already about off days. And he asked their independent work. Christopher Zigmont, two questions, please remind us of the percentage threshold of infection to send everyone back home? And how do you suspect the Thanksgiving holiday will affect this?
So the superintendent has shared that we're looking at 5% in the community with probably closed down our schools. Anything above that or at 5% because that is part of the determination for the communities at risk as defined by DHHS for the state of New Hampshire and Dr. Chian. As far as individual schools, though, I do want to say, you know, some schools, as we've seen in the news, have been forced to shut down for two weeks, et cetera. If we don't have enough teachers and we can't support the in person, then we might have to shut down for a brief period of time. It's hard to say because our substitute pool is not as in depth as it normally is. So people out there listening, all 275 of you, if you have any interest in being a substitute, please fill out the paperwork. We would greatly appreciate it. So, you know, there are other factors that may close down a cohort for quarantining, a whole school, a grade level, et cetera. So it really is dependent, but as far as overall closing, it would be that micro, that 5% in the community and/or if the governor obviously pushed out another executive order like he did last spring.
How about Thanksgiving affecting the hall, affecting all of us?
Yeah. Travel has been on all of our minds for the holidays. We just ask that you do the best you can to stay safe as you do your holidaying, so to speak. And remember that we're all trying to stay in this together and be as respectful as you can to keep as safe as you can when you have those traditions that we all look forward to, certainly coming up, not that far away.
Thank you. Kristen King, could you please clarify, would students be attending the same days of the week each week or alternating Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday?
They would be attending the same days, except for Fridays, which would alternate between the two groups.
Thank you. From Lisa, can you share expectations for data in house? And that was been answered, will there be independent assignments? That's been answered, I believe. Elizabeth Locke or Loke, will the material be material sent home for students to complete on their days off? I believe that's been answered. Anne Marie Powers, when we make a decision for in person or remote learning, how long is that binding commitment quarterly entire year? Might, might be worth reviewing. So when you make a decision for in person or remote learning, how long is that binding?
We're looking for a commitment for the rest of its year because we honestly don't want to have to redo assignments again.
But so the rest of the school year or the rest of the calendar year, Steve?
Full year.
Okay. Rachel Rivia, I understand we will receive details on our child's schedule by 10:30, but what is the actual start day of the new plan? I think you said November 9th, Steve and Drew. Will the YMCA be given ample time to prepare new programs for my child to go to during his off days? So the YMCA and any thoughts?
Well, we have a community care partner meeting. We have been about once a month since August, we started those maybe even July. We had one, I want to say two, two weeks ago, if not last week, I'm sorry, losing track of my days. But we did let those childcare providers know that we're doing that school programming of the anticipated schedule changes for return to school in that early November mark. So they are working to partner with us, continue to do that and meet the community needs.
Quick question. I know you guys were working on an FAQ for this process or this meeting. Is that been posted or is that in the works to be posted after the meeting?
I anticipate sending the FAQ along with tonight's presentation, along with the survey when that goes out.
Okay. Thank you. So it's, we're at 716, there are 127 new messages still. And I think it's my take is, and tell me what you think colleagues, is important to keep doing this for a significant period of time, but we won't be doing this all night. So let's, let's, let's just put that in the back of your head, mind and just, let's think about that as well. Jennifer Hipkis, what is the expectation? We've already been answered the days off and home based learning. Rodario, how do you prepare children and families for the transitions to different teachers and or back and forth from remote to in person when COVID case numbers change? So if we, how do we, how do we, I guess for the transition? If we execute this plan and then we all, I guess, go remote if we close the schools?
If, if we were to go remote, we would still stay with the same teacher and then we would be back to what we're currently doing with this teacher that, that, that comes up through this assignment process.
Thank you. Another question about days off been answered. Sherry Gushda, can people who are remote opt into in person learning next quarter semester and vice versa? I think you just answered that earlier, no. Is there, if there is a negative COVID test result, but the student has some congestion from a typical cold, can they return to school or do they only return once? No symptoms are present. Three, what is the estimated start date to return? That's been answered, what was that, the 30th of October, November 9th? So can you opt into in person learning next quarter semester and vice versa? That's no, is there a negative COVID test result, but the student has some congestion? Can they return to school or do they only return once, no symptoms are present?
I'll answer that. So we are asking that symptoms are improved. Obviously we know that runny noses can linger for, you know, several weeks. So we're not asking that it's completely gone, just that your student is back to their basically normal self, eating, sleeping, not affecting their daily, you know, life where we welcome them back to school. We want to keep kids in school. So we are hoping for quick turnaround times on the COVID test to get them back.
From Caroline, could any changes in COVID spread delay the chance of an in person return?
Only if that went above the 5% mark or the governor made some decisions or for some reason we had a huge impact on our teachers and our students turning.
Thank you. For Stanley Fam, I wasn't clear on what the anticipated start date for in person, November 9th. What is the target start date? Nevett, it's my understanding that once we make a decision, we need to stick with that decision. If we select our kids remote, we can't then change to go in school. Can we change remote if this new school format is not a conducive environment for them? So.
I think we're, 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 we really want that decision to be binding. Obviously, just like we do in the regular school year, if there were some major event or something that was really affecting a family, they could talk with the principals and see if they could work something out.
Thank you. Pascal Curian, how long are you planning to operate under this plan? Weeks, months, end of the year, by the end of the school year? Jennifer Hipkis, what is the timeline for starting answered? Katie G, is accurate to state that if every student chooses to stay with their teacher, then some students will need to be reassigned?
Now, if every single student chose to remain with their teacher, it would just be a matter of whether it would be assigned to remote or in person.
Will remote learning be done every day like it is now?
Yes.
Yes, right. Katie G, at what level to community transmission in cases, it will scope required to go back for remote? That's been answered. Tegan Lister, will there be some kind of pledge or commitment that families are asked to sign in terms of keeping safe outside of school? For example, if there is travel to a hotspot where COVID-19 is high, will these families be asked to quarantine for two weeks upon returns in New Hampshire?
We have to hope that everyone connects as a community and wants to keep everybody safe. And if you've traveled, that you would self quarantine else. If you travel outside New England, you would self quarantine and or just like if your child was sick or if you were sick or we hope that we can continue to pull together as a community to work through this pandemic.
Ryan O'Brien, I would very much want the school to seek an exemption to the no recording statutes for classroom screen intact and mixed remote in person. Thank you. The real in person is your other schools around the country are fully open in person and must have similar space. Why are they open and Exeter is not? That's been answered. And will this plan be set in stone for the entire school year or is it fluid? So that's, it's for the school year. Katie G, given that we now know about airborne transmission, how are we keeping students safe during snack and lunch breaks?
It's a great question. We are keeping students at their desk and they're not traveling around, eating things like that. And when they're done, they will wash their hands and have that whole routine to get their masks back on.
I'd like to add, one of the things I asked about was circulation in these older buildings. And the answer came back that while we don't have central air conditioning, we have air exchanges and that's why the filters do work on a centralized basis, which goes to that question as well. Andrew Most, understanding that we have never done it, could the administration look into what the possibilities are in either obtaining a waiver or working on RSA section 18968? This will allow for instruction every day and allow kids to stick with their current teacher? I mean, we talked about this, but I guess the question is, would you be willing to look into what it would take to obtain a waiver?
Yeah, I could certainly talk to the superintendent and see what he thinks.
Thank you. And oh, so factors change, the school move to all in person over the course of this? So if factors change, can the school move to all in person over the course of the school year?
If the right factors change, we would love to move to all in person.
Thank you. Jen Garcia, is there a tentative date for return in person answered? Stanley Fam, can you also please briefly go over the alternating day schedule again, high level? I want to make sure I understand it correctly.
Sure. So half, half of the students in person would attend Monday, Wednesday, every other Friday. The other half of students in person would attend Tuesday, Thursday and every other Friday.
Norrie Garrity, what is the threshold cases before closing? And we already answered that Lisa, can Renee speak about special ed? Can Renee speak about the special education services?
Yes. Um, our students on IEPs, we're not looking to amend those IEPs or the service delivery model that we agreed to at the beginning of the school year with, with the parents, unless the parents request an IP team meeting, and then we would amend the IP. But as of right now, if your student has already been scheduled and they have their service delivery model, we are not looking to change that at this time.
Okay. From Verbeck, what will happen to the cares program? Will the children who currently go five days a week still have that schedule?
The cares program will need to be ended so we can accommodate for the in person students in the rest of the school.
Those students would attend the same schedule as the other in person students.
Tegan Lister, has the 5% threshold changed? I believe the answer is no. So for a school that has a population of staff and students of 500, the school will not close until there are 25 positive cases. Isn't the 5% of a community level or is that a school level in terms of bringing the school back, shutting the school down?
My knowledge, as I recall, it was a community level.
Thank you. Marion Hanson, is the choice for the entire school year or will the choice be reassessed periodically? It's the school year. Deborah Whitney, will parents be given choice of preference for cohort schedule? Monday, Wednesday versus Tuesday, Thursday to accommodate work or sibling childcare schedules?
We'll be putting out, we'll be assigning them based upon each class and dividing that class in half.
But will there be flexibility to choose the Monday, Wednesday or the Tuesday, Thursday, based on their own personal schedules?
Yeah, I don't think we'll be able to accommodate that level of choice, unfortunately.
Nevett, so to be clear, if a kid's, kid's class is quarantined, they are then sent home with options of using Raz Kids, iReady, et cetera, and provided homework package, but cannot do remote learning. This doesn't seem right or fair to kids in their education. They are being denied education by instructors. So. So if they're quarantined, they're sent home with options, would they be just be given assignments from their teachers? They would if they were sick, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Brian Simpson, why can't you use the MSS Cafe gym for a classroom?
We, if you look at the number of classrooms we need, they're far more than just what would be provided, available in the gym. And then don't forget, you also would then need to hire, I think the number was 22 classroom teachers for both schools. And then you're assuming that first of all, that you can do that and that you can get 22 quality classroom teachers, both the limits of space and the additional hiring demands that would be needed. Make it a huge barrier to try to start with all students in person.
From Sherry Gushda, what will happen to students who are currently getting IEP services every day if they only go to school two to three days a week?
Again, their IP services are not going to change. They would just be with a classroom two days a week when they weren't receiving their IP services.
Thank you. Amanda Kelly, okay. Jamela Sarfett, so someone's asking me to stop reading the questions from real in person teacher. I take your point, but I'm doing it in order that they're received. And I think transparency is important. Jelena Sarfett misses earlier, how we discussed the anticipated timing of this? Yes, we did answered. Melanie, Naomi, if one student in the classroom says positive for COVID, would the entire class have to quarantine as well? And if so, will the entire class then go remote for the time with the teacher? Yes.
Yeah, I can answer, the HHS will do that contact tracing and contact the families as well as the school. It's been our experience thus far that when that's happened and in the cohort setting, that the cohort has had to quarantine along with the teacher for the 14 days. And if it is the entire cohort and the teacher is healthy, yes, that course would be taught remotely for that cohort.
Thank you. Galaxy S10 Galaxy S10E, I think kids need consistency and they are getting it online. If I choose for my child to go back to my child's learning may get disrupted by being sent home from COVID. Staying online makes more sense for a consistent safe learning environment. Erin Rugiero, I have a son at CMS and he had a bellyache and got sent home the first week and he had to take a COVID test to go back to school. This was the first week of school. Shouldn't, have you guys figured out any type of mask or shield that really works and won't be hard for the kids? This is from Monica.
I can only talk about the kids we've had in school have done an awesome job wearing masks. Certainly families be encouraged to, you know, find the mask that their kid feels comfortable with. Certainly having the masks that have characters or things that make a little more fun are always enjoyable for children. For the most part, our experience so far has been that kids do a good job responding to wearing masks.
Ditto at Lincoln Street School, we really haven't had many issues at all about mask wearing. I know some masks are more or less comfortable for me, so just say find the one that fits best for the kids.
Liz Visconti, does that mean my child will be on the bus for less than 10 minutes?
It's hard to answer that. I don't know where Liz lives. That's the distance away from the school and the duration of the bus ride are obviously connected. It's hard to say how long the bus rides are going to be without knowing which kids are going to ride them and knowing the routes.
But I assume that one of the questions is if someone, a child is in a bus for a sustained period of time. I mean, I guess the issue is exposure, potential exposure. Can you walk through that, how you walk through that issue in terms of transportation and ventilation and all that stuff?
The same would hold true. That's why we're hoping to have those bus monitors. They'd be masked and they have social distancing. That's why there's only 22 students on a bus. Certainly it is an enclosed area and doesn't have that air exchange that we have in our classrooms. So that's our only option at this point is to follow the CDC guidelines as closely as we can.
Katie, has there been conversations surrounding if a vaccine comes avail, available as an option to adjust this plan? If it were to come out within the school year and maybe thinking too far ahead, that's been answered. The answer was yes, if it under the right conditions. Jill, will there be assignments given for students off days? It's been answered. Katie Adams, that's been answered again. Stacy Garstka, what are the factors being used to determine which kids would be changing teachers? I would assume that a majority of people will want to keep their current teacher. So how would you do the selection process, I guess?
We're hoping to keep as many kids as possible with their teachers. It's really hard to say just without knowing exactly what the data is going to show. Hopefully it all, it's a nice even clean split, but I can't answer that really accurately without knowing what the data is going to look like.
What we would look at the data and we would see how many students are coming back remote, how many are coming in person? And that would give us an estimate of how many teachers we'd need for each, and then we could adjust accordingly.
From I'm Rapage, just a thank you to everyone for all the hard work on this. From Kate, this may have been addressed at the start of the presentation, but is there a plan for multi-student families? Will the goal be to keep them on the same schedule? We will have students of both LSS and MSS.
Absolutely, yes. Families across both schools will be kept with the same day schedule.
Brian Simpson, the days off sound just like a day off. Will there be any contact or structure with teachers on the days off, off days? Or will students be finishing, finish their work by 9:30 AM and spend the rest of the day doing nothing with nothing to do?
There will not be direct contact with the teachers during those days, but we certainly will try to provide assignments that are robust and worthwhile.
Meredith says, thank you. A contemporaneous comment, Elizabeth Field. Can you include a question on the survey specifically asking the family's view about keeping the same classroom teacher? Beyond the question you already mentioned, some families may be more open to changing than others. This might make reassignments easier instead of randomly choosing students. Brian Simpson, why wasn't the last survey made a binding commitment? We burned two weeks here basically asking the same question to families. But I guess it wasn't binding because they wanted to get a, an initial understanding of the, of the preference, right?
So it's all part of the planning process. We, we couldn't have done it through that way.
If we opt to remain remote, is this commitment for the remainder? Yes, why would you survey the parents if they prefer different days for rotation? We discussed that. Is this decision, is this decision we need to make over the weekend non-binding? Can we get with a commitment that our kids will remain with their teachers? It's a binding commitment and the teachers are going to be assigned. Vincent Powers, how many positive COVID cases would cause the school to revert to full remote? That's been answered. Could you please repeat the expected return date, November 9th? Deciding factors from in-person? There's a question actually about what, what would be the deciding factor determined to get back in fully in-person? Where does the green light come from? Any thoughts about that?
I think we've answered that in that obviously circumstances would have to change. We're not really sure. It could be vaccinations, it could be testing, it could be treatment, such a variety of things in, in the ever-changing process here.
If I, from Galaxy S10E, if I choose online, is that for the rest of the school year? It's been answered. Caitlin Desoy, will with support of their families? What about if students do not have support of their families or the non, on the non-in-person days? What then? How can you obtain support from the school on the non-in-person days? I guess the answer is it's, it's going to be a challenge. Is that right? Yeah. So let's, it's 7:35, maybe another five or 10 more minutes if no one has an objection. And you know, this is an important process and we're vetting the issues. And there goes going to be an FAQ. And I think we're starting to start repeat ourselves on these questions. So I have another five to 10 minutes and then we'll transition to the next phase of this. No, if that's okay with my colleagues and the team.
Let's see how far we get, Neil. I do think it's really important to hear parent feedback. I mean, people have spent a lot of time thinking about this. So some folks haven't even had their questions read yet, but let's see how far.
I generally agree with you, but it's 165 questions. There's no way we're going to get to them. And I do think we're starting to be, let's, let's see how it goes and see what people feel.
I just want to let people know that I will save this chat and this chat will be posted along with the minutes as well as Drew and I and Steve can go through these with the rest of the admin team and make sure any questions that you don't get to. We can either answer directly if they've put a name and we don't have it covered in the frequently asked questions, but we certainly can make sure that they get answered either through the frequently asked questions document that will be posted hopefully by midday tomorrow, as well as if there's an individual question that pertains to a specific. As long as the name is accurate that they've put, we can work to get through these. So if we don't get through all of them in the next five or 10 minutes, we certainly will get to them. So that will help people too.
Thank you. Pascale Kurion, with siblings at CMS, any chance we can send back the survey next Wednesday after their board?
We set the timeline in order for that November 9th start. We, we probably wouldn't wait because it will push that start date out further, which we know the many people are anxious to have their kids come back. So I can let you know that CMS schedule will align with this as far as a Tuesday, the alternating day with the Fridays. So that will be the same schedule.
From Tanny, could you please clarify if there is a return to full in-person? The remote learners must remain remote. I don't think that's right, right? If there's a, if there's a return, then everyone's coming back in.
Right.
Jessica Christopherson, once the new classroom assignments are put out, would it be possible for the schools to let the families know who else is in their cohort or class? So the families can try to plan small pods for remote or on the off days for the in-person students?
We would be in the same situation we were when we started school this year. We're not allowed to share information about other children, families. On the other hand, I would say that families do a really good job contacting each other and finding out assignments and then making arrangements that way.
Hold on, I'm like I lost my. I apologize. If I skip someone, it's accidental. From Lyra, what about children with existing health issues and those that need constant contact with someone for medical reasons? Such as a diabetic, how would corrections? Who would, how would corrections done when six feet is not an option? So if you have an existing health condition, I guess the question is someone that needs constant contact, how would that work in person with six feet limits?
I, maybe whoever this person is would need to contact the school directly specific to that situation. Cause I'm, I guess I'm just, I'm not understanding the question.
If I, I might, I think it's similar, it might be similar in terms of if staff member is working with a student that needed more direct contact, they'd be provided with more PPE.
Mike Sutner, my daughter is jumping for joy as I told her she may be back in the classroom in mid to late November. Thank you. She loves school and is not happy with remote learning. Rachel, under what circumstances would you pull the plug in this planning to go hybrid and stay remote? What are the metrics we discussed that? If COVID numbers spike and positive tests are 5%, what is the plan? If COVID numbers spike and positive tests are over the 5% threshold, what is the plan? I assume it's just go full remote, right?
Yes.
Jamela, if we have children, IPs that have daily in-person time currently, when could be anticipated hearing from the team about the impacts of this new schedule in-person versus remote time, et cetera? So I guess the question is, when is notification from the team about this?
Renee, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding those meetings have taken place and whatever is decided, those meetings will continue. So the services that were applied upon by that team will, are, are in place and would continue with whatever the team already decided.
Correct.
From Jeff, so this in-person plan offers less time with a child's teacher than the current remote plan and no guarantee to keep your current teacher. There's no guarantee to keep your current teacher and less time with a child's teacher. I think that's true. Daniel A. Hearn, the remote learning choice will remain is currently happening with five days of teacher instruction. I, as I'm sure many other families cannot support full days of elementary asynchronous learning. Sarah DeWitt, is there a number of COVID cases that would force the school down? Again, the answer is that what if cases go up in New Hampshire? How many cases are too many within the school? Do we have a thought about cases within the school? So as opposed to the 5% threshold, is there, is there a metric for number of cases within the school?
The metric, the metric really is about ability to have enough instructors and classroom teachers. So if you had a whole grade level and all those teachers were affected, then you might shut down the grade level. So it's really dependent on who's affected and who's has to be quarantined.
From Nicole Mazur, was, was five day, five, were five half-days ever considered as in one cohort in the morning and one in the afternoon?
Yes, that was considered, but due to the difficulty in deep cleaning in between the cohorts and drop off and pickup, as far as dismissal and pickup time that would take, we would lose even more instruction time to accommodate that over the course of the half-days versus the alternating full days.
Is it two or three days of in-person learning? It alternates, right? It's two, three, two, three. Aaron Rugiero, thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate all your great efforts. From Monica, my son has ADHD and has an IEP program. How will work the one in, the one-on-one with kids with special needs? I think that's been answered, this been answered. From Jennifer Hipkiss, just a thought, Right Star Preschool has done some amazing work to create a preschool environment that still very much feels like preschool with small groups and a work. I hope their kindergarten program will look to, look to their work in order to create a key environment that is conducive to the kind of in-person learning that's still best practice as well as new practice. Thank you. Erin Conlon, how many students will be assigned to each teacher if remote? One?
We'll be looking to create balanced classes. A similar number of will be assigned to the remote teachers will be assigned to in-person. You don't want a huge number of kids going, attending a remote class, class, because then they can't get the attention. So we really are going to continue to try to create balanced classrooms.
Katie G, during lunch and snack breaks, kid will have masks, kids will have masks off for greater than 10 minutes, albeit they'll be six feet apart. Yet, since the virus spreads through droplets and via airborne transmission, it distances greater than six feet through talking and certainly with coughs and sneezes. Do the near, new air filtration systems work to eliminate this type of exposure? If not, then wouldn't an entire cohort be required to quarantine when a single student has a positive COVID test?
Yes.
The determination to quarantine is really determined by DHHS. But to answer the air filtration system, our MRF13 filters filter out, I think, correct me if, I think about 85% of the, the bad from the air. And then the ionizes that the board approved filters out 99% of the remaining 15% that goes through the systems. So it does eliminate to reduce the exposure. However, it has to go through the system. So if a student sneezes in class, they still sneeze in class and those droplets stay in that classroom until they enter the filtration system. So it's certainly, I don't want to be misleading in saying the air will be 99% clean all the time. That's when it goes through the filtration system, it is cleaned. So it's been our experience thus far that if a cohort, the entire cohort has been asked to quarantine by DHHS when a single student has positive, has a positive COVID test in the small cohort.
So I'm looking at the clock at 7:45. My thought is, why don't we go till eight? We'll finish these, these, these questions until eight. That's a good amount of time and then we'll have FAQs afterwards. You're going to send out this presentation and it's clearly aligned the communication with, with the team. So this is an effort to be both transparent, but also efficient in this. So that's what I'm thinking of. That's what I'm thinking. So from Matt, will the remote schedule, including specials, be significantly different after November 9th with smaller groups?
The group size won't change with the remotes or what? I mean, we're, they'll be similar to what they currently are. There may be some adjusting of the current remote schedule, but we expect it to be very similar.
M. Casey, maybe one question. Right. No, there are going to be few questions, yes. How will we know if the current teachers have opted into the virtual or in-person option?
Just wanted to be clear so that the teachers aren't necessarily opting in or opting out to one mode of instruction or the other. It's, it's more or less an assignment depending on the circumstances. There's, there's lots of decisions that go into the factory, who's going to be doing what. But for the most part, I can say that our teachers want to be in-person.
Elizabeth Field, if a child's current class is less than 20 students, could they be guaranteed to keep the same teacher if it splits in half? Assuming that teacher is teaching in-person.
That's assuming that no one in that class wants to be remote.
Liz Visconti, this is a random question, but does any of this impact the last day of school looking forward to summer already? Does it, it must, right? Does it, it must, right? Doesn't, isn't the schedule affected? Does the last day affect it? Do we, we don't know?
Not currently. Of course, we haven't hit snow season yet, et cetera, but governor and commissioner have waived those days in the beginning of the year that we had for PD, et cetera. So we're on target as the calendar presented, because we do have some little room with our instructional hours for sure.
If we, if this, if this is Anna Bartel, if opted for a different option outside of the SEU, will we be able to re-enroll them?
Yes.
Neil, this could be sent to the panelists tomorrow. Thank you to everyone for, let's read now. Let, thank you everyone for a very important meeting. Be kind to yourself, each of you. You've all, you've all worked and continue to work incredibly hard. Thank you for all that you do and being inclusive in your communications. We all get through this sincerely. The Malik film, what a very nice note. Thank you very much for that. And that's really more for the administrators and teachers. Tegan Lister, the tricky part is trusting the hope we have in our community in terms of doing the best they can while traveling. This seems very unfair to the rest of us who are navigating the virus and the precautions differently. A pledge to quarantine, et cetera, seems simple and logical. We have to trust everyone and this is not possible for many reasons. It is certainly tricky. It is certainly tricky. For Galaxy S10E, why can't the decision to be remote or in-person change per term? So why, I guess, you know, why to the end of the year as opposed to per term for the decision?
This is, as you can probably tell, this is such a complicated process and reassigning of teachers, et cetera. We're trying to minimize transitions for kids and for our teachers to build some continuity in the educational process.
Thank you. Laurie Smith, will there be a chance on the survey to state which schedule works best due to child work schedules? That's been answered and unfortunately that's no. Bethany Cunningham, when you send the survey out, could you include a simple schedule of the, a sample schedule of the in-person option?
That'll be on the slideshow that we shared tonight. So all that information will be included.
Liz Visconti, will the, would the SSC room still be open staffed? My kid are used to frequently visit. Would IEP testing still go on?
What is a global statement and we're looking at each of the programs. We're trying not to have students, we're having them stay in their classrooms with their cohorts. I mean, clearly there may be different times, but most of the services are push-in, not pull-out at this point. It's just to ensure that they're the number of students in other rooms they have contact with are minimized.
IEP testing will go on and has been going on.
This is from Jeff. Aren't we still the taxpayers? How can you tell parents that we have no choice as the school year progresses to make a change for our child? My thought here is that you, I mean, this, this administration, this team has been very attuned and very helpful and really keyed on helping families. And this is a tough time, but decisions have to be made. Leslie Nichols, if a child has an IEP with one-to-one reading support, will they still be able to come into the school for just that support and go home to after for the rest of the day, the rest of day remote at home?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Jamie Sirios, I'm sorry if I missed this, but why are we keeping the start time for nine AM and not resuming a normal school day?
Transportation, drop off and pick up as well as stay aligned to the remote learning schedule.
Stacy Garstka, sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly. When will the school feel comfortable opening full-time to everyone? If cases drop and/or if there's a vaccine, will we stay with this model until June? That doesn't seem to make sense. We should be reevaluating consistently through the year. I think, I would just, I assume that, I think they've said that they are reevaluating through the year. And it's up to the superintendent and, you know, they want to get back to full in-person as much as anyone else. Nicole Missouri, if students are in-person altering days but end up remote, will the remote schedule become a Monday through Friday schedule or they keep their alternating schedule? Do you, you did.
Making sure I understood the question completely.
Sorry.
My understanding would be that, I mean, you've got, that teacher would be working with both cohorts. So if the whole class is going remote, we would be going to similar to what we're doing now.
M. Leo, with young children, please recommend to put on new masks after mass breaks. This will help keep cross-contamination low. Thomas Mahalco, if a child has a pre-existing condition causing year-round sneezing respiratory symptoms, can a doctor's note on file prevent potential need for repeated testing?
Yes, we welcome these notes. They're going to be crucial to helping kids stay in school. So if you have kids with chronic allergies or asthma, doctor's documentation will for sure help us guide our decision in sending kids home or if they can stay in school. And then at that point, we would just ask that, is this symptom different than what you normally see during the year?
Sabrina Strandberg, could you clarify, please clarify, quote, symptom improvement, end quote, as the threshold referring to school is concerning. In most schools, to my knowledge, it is symptom-free in order to be able to return while we gamble the health of other students and staff and their ability to maintain in-person instruction.
I think, again, we're going to use our judgment here. Symptom-free is going to be really hard. Kids can have coughs and runny noses that linger for up to four weeks. So is it reasonable to have that student stay out? Probably not, but again, we'll use our judgment here. And with proof of a doctor's note or a negative COVID test and symptoms considerably improved and improving, we will let students back in.
Robin, between now and just before return, if the schools are direct, directed to shut down, say by the governor, will classes switch as planned or stay the same as they are now?
Our hope is, once we've made this change, that classes will stay as, as we then determine and that we will not have to change them again. That's part of the reason that we're trying to commit to this plan for the rest of the year unless we reassess and find that we can come back in person due to a significant change in the, in the conditions all around.
Anna Bartel, will siblings be in-person on the same days? I think that's the goal, right? Allison Bells, please confirm that you were ending the CARES program but not ending GBK. It seems that having the space GBK is using would be beneficial to use for in-person classroom space. I think that's correct, right?
It's correct.
Brian Fisher, my child is currently in school, in a school pod with two classmates, remote learning. If we all choose to the remote option, will my child be able to stay with these classmates? If we all choose the remote option, will my child be able to stay with these classmates?
I think, I mean, we're looking to try and, and keep the kids with their teachers as much as possible. I think we're trying to keep things as consistent as possible. It's really hard to answer a specific scenario without having all the information, but we would certainly try.
Okay. Natalie, will siblings be assigned to the same A or B days or, or so they can attend school on the same days when you have one LSS and MSS? That's been answered. The answer, that's the goal, right? Will in-person schedules also be coordinated with EHS and CMS? I think that that's no, right?
No, the, the answer is the CMS and EHS will have the alternating day, will have Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday and alternating Fridays.
Okay. Sorry. Julia McPhee, was there consideration of keeping LSS students remote and bringing MSS students back fully in-person since they are the youngest learners? K through two could spread out across MSS and LSS. Thank you.
There was consideration of this plan, however, trying to meet as many needs as we can of all of our learners. People felt like we wanted to open it up K five.
Thank you. Aaron Rugiero, my heart goes out to both Mr. Adler and Mr. Berstow tonight. Caroline, will masks be provided for students that might need a replacement?
Yes, we have purchased disposable masks for these situations and also have some members of the community who have donated cloth masks to us. If there's any mask makers out there, we are always welcoming donations of cloth masks to help this situation.
And I believe that if you can't afford a mask, we'll provide one for you, right? Right? Not just a replacement, right? Taylor F., do you have guidance as to which types of learners will be better suited for each type of learning, in-person two days versus remote for five days?
Taylor, I'd recommend that you contact whichever your building principal is, so they can work that through with you because that's a real individual choice based on individual child needs. So I'd give them a call.
Okay. So I'm going to borrow a football metaphor and give you the two-minute warning. So it's seven fifty-eight. Aaron Rugiero, thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate all your great efforts. Rachel Rivia, I have children in MSS, LSS and CMS. The survey for MSS analysis has to be returned before CMS has a board meeting to share their plan. Has this been considered? I think we just talked about, we talked about that, right? If school opens to five days, can remote kids go or is that decision binding? I think I'm not much, is that, I'm sure understand that question.
Open for five days. I think that means full in, then we'll be obviously reassessing everything.
Will GBKC be able to offer after-school care now? I think the answer is yes, right?
Yes.
Amanda Kelly, thank you for, for your great presentation, sought answers to questions all. Thank you, Amanda Kelly. Leroy Jenkins, what is being done to audit homework materials? I've seen more scavenger hunts in the past four weeks than I saw in my entire school career.
Yeah, I always would say that, you know, the first person that any parent should talk to would be the classroom teacher if there's a question about assignments.
I call this the last question from Ryan O'Brien. Will schools require a COVID vaccination to one become available? It's a good question. Do we have a vaccination policy in SEU sixteen?
To my knowledge, we do not have a vaccination policy.
All right. So look, it's eight o'clock and my thought here is that we can transition to the next part of this meeting. Thank, thank you for the great questions. This is again, an effort to be transparent. We spent a lot of time over the last several months and this evening also trying to get answers to questions and the presentation I thought was very good. So thank you. How do we end the chat function, Esther? Or do we end the chat function now?
I did look at the last few questions and I would say all of them except one have already been answered. So I can answer that one easily.
Thank you, Esther. I was doing the same. There's not that many more questions left and I think that we can say no more questions at this point possibly, but we need to look at what's left there and please answer anything that hasn't been covered. Thank you.
Mine shows a hundred and seventy-seven new messages. Okay.
You have to scroll down, Neil. It's not only, it's really only a few more.
Okay, thank you. All right. So no more questions. So I think, why don't we, why doesn't the board discuss this now? Does that make sense, Dawn?
There is one more question here that has not been answered. And that was Esther, which one did you, most of them?
Just scroll down through again.
There's like ten more questions from where you stopped. So if we can just quickly look at them.
What about have any considerations to the virus mutations? We do meet with our health consultants on a regular basis. Dr. Johnson is our consulting physician. To my knowledge, the mutations have not been discussed, but certainly I can put it on my questions list for Dr. Johnson and the superintendent when we connect usually, like I said, weekly. The next one is Great Bay. We answered that. Let's see. One about teacher changes. We did answer that, but just a word, there is going to be a question on the survey that if your priority is to keep your teacher and you you can opt to, to check that off, which means you may be remote or in-person, but you would be able to keep your same teacher. We talked about how the learning would meet in the hundred and eighty days, the Great Bay program. The decision being binding. I have three students in three different schools. It'd be easier if my students attended different days instead of being on the same days. We're trying to keep families together. Again, if there's real issues in certain families, I would contact their principals. We're doing, it's going to be hard, but if there's real extenuating circumstances for some reason, certainly we could talk through that. And then the last one is just a comment and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. So for everyone's knowledge, the, the board had the opportunity to meet with the senior leadership team to discuss this. So we've already asked, you know, in, not in the size that would violate public meeting laws. But I wonder, I think it's appropriate for the board now to say, have the opportunity to ask the team questions. So why don't we do that if no one has an objection? Okay. So, so I'm going to open it. Don, Patrick, Sarah, Patty, who wants to go first? If anyone has any questions?
I have questions and comments that I like. So it was helpful to hear a preview of this presentation last Friday and and I also want to say before I make my comments that I really appreciate all the work that's been done. There's certainly a lot of work and I think a lot of the details, particularly around health and safety are really well thought out. But I also hear the concern from the public comments and I have my own concerns about how this is serving our students. And I'm frustrated, honestly. I'm really frustrated with this situation because I think we have seventy-five percent of our families that want to come back in person and we're essentially only offering them instruction fifty percent of the time. So, you know, someone asked about how are kids going to get a hundred and eighty days of instruction? Esther had a great response about when you're in smaller cohorts, you can speed up the level of instruction and probably push it farther, but we're going to have fifty percent of the time when they're not getting any direct instruction. I have a really hard time with that. I don't think that meets the needs of our students very well. And I think we need to keep pushing and be creative about how to overcome these resource barriers that are driving this decision. The decision is based off of, as far as I can tell, resource limitations. I think we all agree, would agree that if kids could be in school a hundred and eighty days or whatever number of days are left, that would be preferable. That's the best educational model. But we have limitations in terms of classroom space. We have limitations in terms of the number of teachers. We may have other limitations that are there. And I think we need to keep thinking about ways that we can overcome those resource deficits. So I, you know, I had a couple of initial thoughts. I do not pretend to be that I'm the one to solve this because I don't have a solution. But I'm, but I, I do hear the frustration in the questions, even though people can't express it in their voices. I read into it in terms of the questions that are asked and I think it's legitimate. So in terms of space, I don't know that there's too much we can do. It sounds like there might be a couple of spaces we could recover. I don't really know how many spaces. I know that we need twenty-one. We would need thirty or thirty-three classes. I don't know how many we're using. We only have twenty-one available. So I guess my first question is, how many classrooms are we planning to use in each building for those folks that are going to be in person? That's a question for Stephen Drew, I guess, or if Esther can answer it.
Yeah, we're using all the classroom space, all the classrooms are we using. What's the 21 and 22 are what's left available after we've met the needs of students that require various related services, various programming, et cetera.
So we're maxed out, it sounds like, on classroom space. So the only option is, I mean, I heard Drew mention something about, you know, maybe there's some space off-site, a couple of spaces. Obviously, it's not going to meet the full need. You know, I do really resonate with the question that was asked about the privacy laws, and when there's any option to get a waiver. I think if the classrooms could be taught with a cohort that half's in person and half is online at all times, that could be one way, at least, that folks are getting instruction every day. But I do understand that there is, right now, a legal impediment to that in terms of privacy laws. But I thought a number of families had a really, you know, reasonable request that we look into whether or not there's any chance of getting a waiver or looking at ways of being compliant but working around that. If we can't do that, then I wonder about on the days off, so to speak, the days that folks aren't in school for in-person learning, can we provide any support? Could we get paraeducators to work, you know, a half-day for one section, another half-day for another section? I know we don't have the staff right now, but can we look at starting to come up with a hiring plan to get them on board by January, or February, or March? Because I anticipate that we're going to be in this position for the remainder of the year, and based on the information that I'm hearing, I heard Bill Gates talk about this recently, we could be in this position for the next two years. So, you know, I don't want to be negative about this, but I think we need to think beyond just, you know, the current, the current situation. I think the planning's been great, given the resources we've had. But, you know, we put aside, the board put aside some money anticipating that there'd be needs. My understanding is that we have about $400,000 left of that money after, after accounting for some of these other needs. $400,000, I don't know how many paraeducators that hires. Maybe it hires eight. Doesn't hire a lot. But if, just hold on a second, Esther, before we get to that, but if we need additional money, if we only have $400,000 and we need $1.2 million, I would like to have the opportunity to go before the voters and have them consider whether or not they wanted to improve that additional expenditure. This is, this is our community. People choose to be in Exeter for a reason, because we have great services and great schools. And I'm frustrated that we're not able to provide it at the level that we'd otherwise be capable of. But I appreciate that it's not easy. There aren't, there aren't 50 paraeducators knocking on the door waiting to get in. I get that problem, but even if we can hire a couple more, every little bit, if we can help a few classes at a time get that, get that experience of having instruction every day, or having, it wouldn't be instruction with paraeducators, so they know they can't provide instruction, but support every day, that would be preferable than these, than just having days off. Esther, you wanted to say something about one of the comments that I made?
Yeah, it's just that I think that we've, we've thought through this a lot, and when we have a viable plan, we would certainly come to the board and ask about resources. The issue right now is, we've had, there's nine to 12 opening, pair openings in the co-op. There's four at SMS. They've been open since school started. We've interviewed, offered jobs, and they haven't taken them. So it's certainly on our radar, trying to hire pairs. We're just trying to fill the positions currently to meet the immediate needs of our SAU community. So certainly, we're working to do that. We couldn't even hire them to increase our triple Cs, because we wanted to do that to increase, you know, students coming in that were tier two and tier three needs. So it's certainly on the radar, Patrick, and I think if we come up and we think we have some kind of viable plan to do that, we would certainly come to the board and ask about those resources.
So thank you for that. You know, the other comment I want to make related to this is that I think this is happening to some extent, but any, even if we help, even if we can only find help in May, if that's what happens, or if we can have, find help in April, whenever it is, you know, each day that we can, you know, help our community get some additional instructional support, I think is meaningful. You know, I don't, Esther, I'm just thinking about what you just said. You know, do we have anything advertised for Main Street and Lincoln Street School in terms of looking for extra para professionals? Or do we have to make a commitment to waiting until the, the need at the SAU wide level before Exeter, excuse me, before Main Street and Lincoln Street School advertise?
I'm going to ask Renee to speak to that, because I believe there's ads currently.
Yep, there's current ads for Lincoln Street and Main Street, so special ed is still in advertisements for tier-two interventionists that are not filled. So the Exeter Elementary Schools have openings for support, for support for personnel that are not filled, and we are advertising.
How many people are we looking for in those positions?
I have four, and then I know, I think Drew and Deanna have two, so we have, so yeah, four plus five, we have nine openings right now.
I have three as well.
I, I'm just frustrated. I mean, I'll just, I just want to be straightforward. I'm just frustrated. It's not, and it's not directed at any of the people that are doing the planning. I'm frustrated for our families about what the situation is that we find ourselves in, that, you know, where I, I consider us to be one of the better school districts in this whole state, if not New England. And, you know, I read some of the comments about why are other schools able to return folks to school and we're not? And I think it's resource limitations. We have limitations in terms of space, in terms of teachers, in terms of other things. I don't think anything that anyone said is illogical. I'm just frustrated. And I think if there's, if there, if we run into a stumbling block, I'll just say it again, if we run into some stumbling block of resources that's based on budget, and I appreciate what Esther just said, if we, if we knew that that was the case, we would come to the board. I would say again, please come to the board, whether we have to call a special meeting, whether we have to figure out a way to bring the community together on a special basis, because, you know, if we're short on money, I think this community has the wherewithal to support it. I think the bigger issue is that we don't have the space, we don't have the bodies. It's not an issue of money. We can't get people, there aren't enough people out there right now, from what I'm hearing. But if that changes and we run into an issue that, well, there's just not enough money in the budget, then come to the board, because we would want to go to the community if need be. I mean, I'll speak, I can only speak for myself. I would want to go to the community if need be, to ask for additional funds to meet that need.
I think I speak for all of us on behalf of the administration, is that we appreciate that the, the support that this board continues to give us, and certainly, I think we're probably, believe it or not, more frustrated than you, Patrick, because we've been trying to figure this out since June. And every time we think we have a viable plan, something else changes, the shifts, the landscape shifts. So we continue to evaluate it every day and try to get more kids in, certainly. So if we, if the landscape shifts again, and there's other opportunities, we absolutely would come to the board, because we, you know, we know that this board will support us. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
The last thing I'll say, and then I'll turn it over to someone else, Neil, is just that I was really happy with the responses to the Q and A. I think that, given the limitations, I think folks are really trying to maximize what we have available to us. So it's certainly not for a lack of effort that I hear with anyone that's doing things. And I do think some of the families had some good suggestions that we should consider, you know, and I think that I don't hear that there's a unwillingness among the people that are planning this to listen to those suggestions and, and try to improve the experience in any way that we can. So thank you to the public for providing their input. Thank you, Patrick. Dawn, Sarah, Patty?
I do have a couple of questions. When we're advertising for the pairs, are we saying this is for remote, potentially just remote teaching? Okay, maybe substitutes, just remote substitutes now? So there has to be some kind of a commitment that they'd be willing to come into the building?
Yeah, substitutes, though, we always, we do give a preference to. Do you prefer to just be remote, in-person, or both, and then cater to that need?
Yeah. And I don't exactly know how many students qualified that they need their own space because they're unable to wear PPE. And I don't know the cost associated with it, but if it's full classrooms that they're occupying, can we rent trailers outside of the building for an extended amount of time? Maybe that would be less impactful or open up more room? That was just one thought.
You would have to empty the whole building and add trailers and hire teachers that, that this, the sheer volume of space we need and the sheer volume of teachers we need to be in-person goes far beyond just the classrooms for supporting individual students.
Okay. So when the kids are in-person, are they staying in their room for their specials? And are they staying in there for lunch? Okay, could we maybe, for their home days, save that time for the specials? Keep that remote? And so there's still some touchpoints for them, and their teacher won't have, you know?
Good suggestion, Patty. That's what we're looking at. It's just, it has to do with all the scheduling, so we're looking at that as an option. We just don't know yet if that's feasible. It's certainly worth looking at.
Okay. And I do echo, it would be great if we could have additional remote touchpoints during those two to three days at home. It's, it's definitely harder for me. I think my fifth grader will be okay, but I feel for those K through three population children. So hopefully, we can figure something out on that end. And thank you all. You know, I fully support all of the planning and time you've put into this.
Dawn, do you have any comments or questions?
Just have a comment. You know, I echo most of all what's been said, sort of as in just listening, and I've been thinking a lot about the same, too, on those off-days, what could happen? I mean, I wonder, and I don't know the constraints behind it, but if we were to put out even sort of a letter to the editor, even maybe looking for retired teachers or people who are not looking for a full-time job, if you will, but someone who is trained that could support, whether it's just questions or something. I mean, I know we had a lot of, we have a lot of new teachers and things this year, so there's been a lot that have vacated in the last year or two. I just wonder if there are people who are finding themselves more at home than they thought they would be, and if they might be willing to come back or help out on those remote days. So it's just a comment.
Sarah?
Well, first, thank you to everyone who has worked so hard on these plans, and to all the parents that posted so many thoughtful questions. You know, it's, I think, been such a challenging process. I agree with everyone that the remote plan and in-person plan isn't perfect for anyone. I'm hopeful also that we would have more pairs, but knowing that the governor mandated that pairs must come to school in-person, even for those kids who are remote learners, makes it very challenging for our pair of staff. And having been on the teacher negotiation and parent negotiation contract, and I've learned and heard from the pairs about their, they're so concerned. They're the people who have the closest contact with the students about, about their own health and well-being. And I think, you know, based on the number of openings and the lack of people applying, that this is a result of having increased positive cases in our community and people being really concerned. I don't think it's a lack of people's interest in supporting children, or lack of interest in SAU 16. So I just think that's a piece to point out about the governor's mandate for, for pairs is critical. I don't know that I have any other questions that weren't answered, weren't asked by our parents. I think they were really thoughtful. Thank you. I think that's all.
Thanks, Sarah. So I have some prepared remarks I'm going to read. I've put a lot of thought into this, and I think this is important. "I believe the administration has put together a good plan for providing a return-to-school option for our kids, given the significant limitations placed upon our district by the COVID-19 pandemic and the limitations inherent to our staffing levels and our physical plant in Exeter. I believe that the work of our administrators, teachers, and staff during this national emergency has been excellent and often heroic. This pandemic is a nightmare for all of us, and they have performed great work under historically difficult circumstances. The plan presented to us does not and cannot guarantee the safety of our school community. This is impossible under the current, current circumstances. Instead, what I believe it does well is balance and mitigate the risks we all face when we train to some form of in-person learning. With respect to the risks, there are many and evident within, with both in-person and remote learning. The risk of spreading COVID-19 further is revealed with the 215,000 Americans who have died as a result. It's also important to note the risk that causes me real concern as we don't fully understand the harm that COVID-19 can do to kids and adults as our understanding of it continues to evolve. We are still in the very early stages of our understanding of this deadly virus, and drawing, and drawing definitive conclusions at this time is risky. That said, infection rates in New Hampshire are very low, albeit rising recently. The experience of some countries and other school districts appears to show initial success with returning to school, and the potential harm for some of, some, some of continuing to learn remotely is real. Learning with their peers in-person is clearly better for our kids, and this is particularly true with respect to their social, emotional learning, well-being, and mental health. Further, the parents and guardians in our school community have made their preference clear, with about 75% stating a preference for returning to in-person learning. With current conditions seeming to be as favorable as possible, I think it's appropriate for the district to respond to the wishes of our community. And the plan presented to us does a good job of making this experience as safe as possible. It's also a voluntary return to in-person learning, which is an important factor for me. I don't blame anyone for not wanting to work or learn in-person under these conditions, and returning to school remains optional at this point. I also believe that one of the most useful services our board can provide is to have a candid and transparent conversation about this circumstance. To then end, I'd like to highlight two points. First, it's important that everyone understands that in spite of the significant efforts of our leadership team and our medical and health science partners, SAU 16 and the extra school district do not yet have COVID-19 testing capabilities that allow us to perform population sample testing, let alone test everyone in our schools. That capability is currently being developed by the limitation, developed, but the limitations of nearby laboratories and the availability of testing equipment simply make this impossible right now. As has been made clear by infectious disease experts, testing is critically important to effectively navigating this pandemic, and its absence makes our effort to return some kids to in-person learning riskier and more difficult. Second, I'd like to be completely clear about what appears to be most likely to occur once some kids return to our schools. One, some kids will return to in-person learning with all possible risk mitigation efforts in place, and our team has done a lot. Second, at some point not soon after that, we will all likely receive notice that a student, faculty member, administrator- that a student, faculty member, administrator, or a member of our staff has tested positive for COVID-19. It's already happened, in fact, at LSS. The lies, three, the lies of the infected and their family will be significantly disrupted for at least a few weeks, as might the lies of an entire class of kids. Four, this cycle of disruption will continue for some period of time. To be clear, I believe this means that anyone who sends their children back into our schools must be fully prepared to receive a notification that their son or daughter has tested positive for COVID-19. In spite of the significant efforts of the district, it's taking, the district is taking to make everyone as safe as possible in our schools. This is simply the reality that we face. Again, I support this effort to offer an in-person learning option for our kids and believe the administration has put together a good plan to make this as safe as possible. But bound, balancing the real risks involved with returning some kids to in-person learning is a challenge we all need to consider candidly, especially our parents and guardians when making their decision. So, thank you. Those are my remarks. Do we need, do you need anything from us, Esther, Steve, and Drew? No?
I have some additional comments I'd like to make. Have him listen to my fellow board members make their comments. Good. Okay. One is that I, I like the question that Patty raised about whether or not, and I think Sarah also raised a component of her too, or should I call you Molly, about whether or not pairs had to be remote in terms of support. Maybe the positions we're looking for aren't pairs. Maybe they're, you know, maybe they're classified another way, if that's a limitation around the governor, that they have to be in person and only provide in-person support. Because I think, in my mind, the goal would be to try to provide some support for the off days. If that's not a pair educator, or if we need to go to the, somewhere and look for a waiver, I, I don't, I don't know how that works. But ideally, if we could provide support on the off days, I don't know if that makes any difference about how we advertise those positions, but I just raised that as a question. The other thing is, when we look at the budget for next year, a point I wanted to make is that I hope that we're looking at the next year's budget as that we may be in this mode for all of next year. And if we are, and we need more teachers and more pair professionals, that we budget for that, that we'd be looking ahead to really try to provide as much support as possible. And then the last thing was just, again, you know, I think it would be helpful if there's, if there is, I know there were, I think there were, my understanding is that there were two concerns about the issue of sort of simultaneously being in-person and remote. One was a privacy concern. A second concern was whether or not our teachers should be expected to do that sort of work. And I recall from earlier presentations that both concerns came forward. So even if there's a privacy waiver, there may still be a concern about whether or not we want to ask that of our teachers. I, I, I think that's, you know, I don't have the answer to that, but I, I think if it is possible to do, and it seems reasonable, then it would solve a lot of these concerns. Because you could have a class that's 20 students, 10 could be remote, and 10 could be in-person on any particular day. If, if the concern is that it's so much additional work for teachers that it doesn't seem equitable or fair, then, again, that's a resource issue. And I think the board could be asked about whether or not there should be some sort of supplemental compensation for teachers to take on that additional work. I would just not want there to be, i- if it makes sense educationally, to not have it be the barrier, be the resources. I said that several times, but again, I think this community and the board is, is open to providing additional resources if needed to try to work around the problem.
Thank you, Patrick. So I think, I think this ends this segment. Thank you all very much. Sarah?
Sorry, Neil. I, I was hoping Esther might be able to answer the question about instead of hiring pairs on remote learning days, to hire substitute teachers perhaps, as Dawn had indicated. We have so many teachers who recently retired that perhaps they would be willing to work, you know, a portion of the week during these circumstances. And with our budget, if we could support that, and that, that they would be excluded from the governor's mandate as licensed teachers.
Yeah, to be clear, the governor's mandate mandates that we offer, that all students get offered in-person services. Parents don't want that. They can have remote services, and pairs can work remotely to support those students. They don't have to be in person. It's really a parental decision. The governor's mandate said we had to offer in-person to all students with IEPs, which is different, because some have opted to stay remote, and they're being supported by pairs remotely. As far as substitutes, we have consistently advertised in SAU 16. We are getting a few here and there. Chris and I offered a training for all pairs, so if they wanted to support people remotely or in-person to answer their questions about safety, we physically had our admin assistant call all 39 that were on the list, and five came in for the training. So, again, it's the same issue, hiring substitutes, pairs. They're just not, people don't want to do it. And, you know, a variety of reasons. We all know the variety of reasons. But we certainly are pushing hard to advertise and try to get as many resources at our fingertips as possible.
Thanks, Esther, for clarifying. I think that really helps, especially for all the parents listening when we're talking about resources available to make it happen on those days when children are at home, to, to try and offer, you know, some sort of touchpoints for in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to transition out to the regular schedule, and the next item is the PTO update. Esther, did you contact Allison beforehand?
I did, and she said she wanted to be a panelist, and I sent her the panelist invite, and she confirmed she got it. I don't know if perhaps we went so late that she had to leave the meeting.
She's online. Give me a second.
Okay, I was just going to say, maybe Dawn could text her and see if she wants to come on as a panelist. Maybe we should, the next, if she comes on.
Oh, I'm right here. I'm right here.
Oh, here she is.
I, um, I was listening on my phone as a member of the community, so let me put that down. Hold on. Okay. Um, okay, so not a lot of updates since last time. We're having our first meeting tomorrow, so not a lot has changed, but I do have a few updates. So I just want to reiterate the goals for the PTO for this year. Um, the goal is to build community. And we just, you know, we recognize that parents, teachers, and the principals and assistant principals have limited bandwidth, so we're all doing what we can within our limits. And we're also going to try to fundraise appropriately. We're mindful that COVID has had an impact on so many in our community. Loss of wages, reduction of hours, et cetera. And our fundraising efforts will focus on light lifts for our volunteers and parents. I did explain in our welcome letter some easy, low-cost ways to help the PTO. That was sent out the first week of school. And those, those ways are, among others, the Box Tops app. Downloading that would be great, scanning your receipts that you, when you shop. You, you're already going shopping, so scanning your receipts to see if those have Box Top coupons is super helpful to us. The textile bins that are in the Lincoln Street parking lots, if you could donate your clothing, bedding, shoes, stuffed animals, all that kind of stuff can go in the textile bins, and we get money from those. Direct donation, if you're able. We have a PayPal link on our website, and I believe it's also went out in the welcome letter. And then we will be having some restaurant nights again this year. COVID-friendly, we'll choose restaurants that are giving delivery or takeout as an option. So we will have announcements about when those are coming up. The fiscal year '21 budget is pretty much done. Robert, our new treasurer, was just making some updates to it before the meeting tomorrow, so I will send that out to Beth and Deanna and Drew and Steve, and then the rest of the core PTO team before the meeting tomorrow night. And then I'll make it available in the chat when people sign in. Despite our limited fundraising abilities this year, we hope to still be able to support the schools as consistently as we had pre-COVID, just based on their needs. There aren't as many needs this year because there's been so much CARES funding. So we've been, you know, in close contact with the four administrators to, you know, just say, let us know what you need, and we'll provide it if we can. We are, you know, we're kind of tempering that support as, you know, the timeline for return to normal will have an impact on how much we're able to give. You know, you were all kind of just discussing that we don't know how long this is going to last, and it could be into next year. So if COVID precautions continue into 2021 and beyond, we just need to be conservative in order to have a PTO in the future. So that's definitely something that we're, you know, keeping in mind. We did determine that we were able to support the teacher-staff startup costs this year, and those are ongoing. I've, I've made a couple of rounds of reimbursements to the school. I think we're at about 1,700 reimbursed so far, and we had budgeted 7,000, so we're, we're doing just fine there. The deadline to submit those receipts either to me via email or to the school's front offices is by November 13th of this year. So, again, with Box Tops, last year we were just under 1,600. We'd really love to get that to 2,000 for this year, so everyone download the app and choose, you have to choose Exeter Elementary. It's not Main Street School or Lincoln Street School. You have to choose Exeter Elementary, and then that will give your, give us credit. For our fiscal year '21, some things that we either have upcoming or won't be able to do at this point. The UNH hockey game for the fifth-grade chorus is likely not going to happen. I would say, like, 99% not likely to happen. I was actually on a town hall meeting with the UNH president earlier this afternoon. He is hopeful for a hockey season, but at this time, his priority is to the students. So in terms of allowing fans at games, the students would get first priority, which is the way it should be. And UNH campus also has a strict COVID testing protocol in place, so the logistics of organizing something like that, even if off-campus fans were allowed, it would be nearly impossible to, to organize that event this year. We have a goal of 2,000 for the restaurant nights, and usually those yield about 500 per event. We did have the Kona Ice Truck at the beginning of the school year, which was great, and that, we got $224 from that, so that's going towards that goal of 2,000, which is awesome. Square One Art is severely lagging in orders right now. Normally, we have about $10,000 worth of orders, and we yield about 3,500 in profit. So far this year, we only have 1,200 in orders. The, the deadline for families to submit their artwork, artwork is this Thursday, October 15th. And the deadline to order is Monday, November 2nd. We're looking into the possibility of extending both deadlines, and we might have more information about that tomorrow, but at this point, I don't know. But parents, we know that a lot has been asked of you this year, but please, if you could encourage your children to do their artwork this week during some downtime or maybe after school time, and then upload it with your phone or on your computer. That would be great. If you have a smartphone, you have a scanner. And if you don't know how to do that, please feel free to reach out to me on Facebook, or you can email me. My email's on the PTO contact page. It's a really cool trick in the Notes app, so you have a scanner. And then we are definitely doing spiritware this year. We'll have more details tomorrow on the call, on the PTO call. Suzie Fenesth and Lauren, Lori Smith, who I believe has a Lincoln Street School child, are heading that up this year, so we're excited about having that in place. And they, they're going to use the Junior Hawks logo, which is going to be super exciting. The teacher-staff raffle is not going to be included in this year's budget as of now because it's not something that we feel like we can pursue virtually. We think it would be really, really challenging to do virtually. But if, if things work out and we're in person at that time of year, usually we do that one right after February vacation, then we would love to have the teacher-staff raffle again, because we know it's something that the students and the teachers really love to do. The Lincoln Street School yearbook. Right now, we're not going to start it up. Michelle Harvall was the, kind of the front, she ran that last year with a team from Lincoln Street. And even though her daughter has moved on to CMS, she still wants to be a part of that committee, but it's really difficult to do virtually. She had to finish it virtually, and she really would like to have a team with students, if that's possible. So we, we don't have to make a decision on that right now. We definitely should be able to make a decision within the next couple of months. But as of right now, it's not something that we want to pursue virtually. As far as Get Fit in May goes, we're hoping to start planning soon. We'd love to do something in person, but we're exploring alternatives, and we'll have more details about that on the PTO call tomorrow night. Just to give some position updates, I did share at the last meeting that Robert Delory is our new treasurer. Jennifer Gardis is our new social media manager, and we're slowly onboarding her. We'll get her there. It's, it's certainly not for lack of her trying. It's for all of us having limited bandwidth. And then Laurie Parlin-Smith is going to be helping with the Spiritware fundraiser. Beth and Deanna are handling the cultural enrichment this year. It was just easier with us being remote and it being part of the school's budget for, for them to, to do that. They requested that they handle booking all of those virtual events, so we, I said absolutely, you can take that. Thank you, Beth and Deanna. We will need a new president. As I said on the last call, this is my last year as president. So anyone who wants to take this on, please reach out to me. And if anyone has any ideas of someone who would be a great fit to take this on, then please give me their name, and I will harass them mercilessly for the rest of the school year. And we'd love to get one or two more fundraising volunteers to, to do a couple of smaller fundraisers throughout the year. Nicole Mazer is incredible. She's Superwoman, but she could use a hand, for sure. And then, again, our first meeting of the year is tomorrow at 5:30 on Zoom. I did send the Zoom link out, and both principals sent it out in, I think, Mr. Adler sent it in a singular communication, and I believe it was in Drew's last newsletter with the PTO corner at the bottom. So if anyone is missing those links, please either post something on the, on the PTO Facebook page or on the Parents of Main Street Schoolers or Parents of Lincoln Street Schoolers, if you need assistance with the link, and I'll post that online as well. So, that's it for me. Anyone have any questions? You guys are all muted.
Thanks again. Thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Thank you.
Esther, are you still around?
I am. I just had to, I, all I've been doing is drinking seltzer water. That went a little longer than I anticipated. Last time, I quickly ran down the hallway.
Over to you.
Financial update. Molly, any news there? I don't think anything earth-shattering.
Sorry, Declan, just woke up.
Financial analysis.
Yeah, so in your report, or in your board pack was the financial report. It does have almost 2 million unencumbered. Again, this is the first financial It does have almost two million unencumbered. Again, this is the first financial. So we're still working on encumbering a lot of your stuff. And as the year goes on, you'll see the actuals grow as well as the encumbrances. Um, I don't know if you wanted to talk about emergency order number thirty-eight right now. Esther, do you want me to address that or did you want to talk about it later? Oh, you're on mute.
Now, now is a good time.
Okay, so, um, the other day we were made aware of emergency order number thirty-eight and I checked with our auditors. So we did end the year with about four hundred and ten thousand dollars of fund balance from last year. And if we have expenses related to COVID, um, if you choose, we could draw down on the fund balance from last year to cover some of those COVID-related expenses. Um, so some of the items that we could think about doing that would be uh, any additional custodial work that you need to support the opening of schools. Um, and maybe a bus monitor needed to help with the, the, the COVID issues of keeping on masks. And so in order to, to spend that money, we'd have to write a letter to the DOE. I think it's to the DOE or to the state requesting approval for that. Um, other districts have had great success. It's just, um, finding the balance of what you want to return to taxpayers versus what you would like to spend down to support freeing up the budget this year for COVID.
So the, the question at this point to the board is, the first question is, do you want to consider spending more down from that fund balance? Normally, obviously, we can't do, we don't, we're not allowed this opportunity. What you've, the tax rate is, you know, helps out the tax rate, but because our tax rate hasn't been set, we, the emergency order number thirty-eight allows the board to reconsider um, COVID-related expenses. So not any other kind of expense, but a COVID-related expenses. And right now, we do know, as you saw in the presentation tonight, that we would need um, an additional custodian as well as bus monitors. So both of those are, um, COVID-related. The bus monitors, um, obviously right now look like they can be covered within our budgetary expense for transportation because we didn't, we're not running as many buses as we normally do. So you saw that about a hundred thousand dollars savings. But if you wanted to save that to maybe look to try and, uh, as Patrick said, in April, rent ten tents and bring kids in on the off days for SEL activities or something. Do you know what I mean? Um, then that increases that pot of money for springtime, something like that. I'm just totally thinking off the top of my head of what you might want to, even though it's a savings in our budget, what you might have an opportunity to recoup now. So in the spring, say, for example, we might have some opportunities, if we don't get there earlier, to bring, you know, to do something on those off days, so to speak. Um, so anyways, just a, a thought for the board to ponder. And is there a timeline on this, Molly?
Um, so it does have to be before the tax rate set. So, um, we will have to do it in the next few weeks or so. Um, but the other thing is I also learned today is, as you know, the FEMA money was rejected. We weren't able to go after FEMA. However, they did release some potential funding today for what we would have claimed through FEMA. So in putting that together for Exeter right now, the cost that I have, um, just with gathering information from today was just about thirty thousand dollars related to PPE, which includes your face shields, your masks, um, ventilator work, ionization, um, that's all roughly thirty thousand dollars. So we're going, I'm going to be working, um, to try to get that recouped. Again, they, they aren't doing it through FEMA, but, um, the governor was going to potentially let us do it through Gopher.
Good, um, quick question, just for clarification. These, these are the, this is, I thought we had earmarked, is it half a million to go back to the town? Is that right or is that wrong?
So it was four hundred and ten thousand on your DOE report that would have gone back to the town. But what this emergency order number thirty-eight is saying that they recognize we all have COVID-related expenses that are being, that are difficult to cover in the current year budget. So they're letting us recall the DOEs essentially and potentially spend down some of that fund balance on COVID-related expenses.
But we haven't yet eaten into the five hundred and something thousand dollars, five twenty-eight that we prepaid for expenses, right? We, we have a cushion of like half a million. I mean, I don't think we started to eat into that yet, right? So this is, this would be five hundred thousand we haven't eaten into yet. Plus, if we did the whole thing, it'd be nine hundred thousand dollars, right? Is that the math right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I wouldn't say you haven't eaten into it yet. It was just additional expense you moved to last year to help your bottom line. So it's hard to say if you've actually eaten that specific amount because you have spent about thirty thousand dollars on the FEMA or stuff that we were going to get reimbursed through FEMA, so.
But, but, but I mean, but, but I mean, to, let's say it's one for one, like we prepaid five twenty. Let's say it's one to one, that becomes savings, that goes in the bank. Given that, ceteris paribus, like it'd be five hundred, four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars or something, right? Yeah, we, we have a, we have a cushion still, right?
Right, we have a cushion. This is just, we wanted to make the board aware.
Right, right.
Order. So if you wanted to pursue it, it's a short window that we would have to write a letter. So do you want us to pursue it for that custodial work and bus monitor? Or one or the other, or up to a certain amount that we towards these expenses or, or not, really is the question.
Sarah, you had your hand up?
A portion of, thank you, Neil. If a portion of these funds are pursued and then they're not spent, would they be part of the budget that we could return to the taxpayers at the end of this year?
Yeah, so essentially if we, so emergency order number thirty-eight essentially does exactly what we did with the items at the end of last year. We put it to, back to last year and it frees up budget this year. And then if you don't spend that budget this year, then it would fall to your bottom line and go back to the taxpayers.
Is there any reason that we wouldn't want to do that?
Well, if you were, have a target to give back to your taxpayers in the current year. So what we gave back at, at the end of last school year offsets the tax rate. So essentially you're just determining, you're, you're reducing the offset to your tax rate to free up availability for the unknown. If needed.
In effect, we'd be raising taxes even though we already have half a million prepaid, right?
Correct. You're just not, you wouldn't be reducing the tax rate as much.
Which in effect is, so I mean, I mean, I guess my, and Patrick and Dawn and Patty, what do you think? I don't want to keep talking. Patrick?
You know, I'll jump in. I mean, I think the quick response to Sarah's question and maybe Molly's already answered that is that it's just weighing it out with the needs of taxpayers. Because if we don't earn that four hundred thousand dollars, then essentially that, um, has to be raised in taxes.
Right.
Um, you know, we've had a tradition of returning money. We, Molly and Esther and others, you know, were very proactive in thinking of ways that we could offset some costs. And we saved some money last year because we were closed during part of the time. So as Neil pointed out, we have five hundred thousand dollars, maybe we have four hundred fifty thousand dollars left. It's kind of a cushion, uh, you know, potentially for COVID expenses. That's why, that's why we thought of it. I, I get nervous about saying that we're going to, you know, use another four hundred thousand dollars. We don't have anything in mind that we're going to use it. Um, because I think we have a responsibility to taxpayers. If we felt like we had something that we were going to use it for and we, and we needed a hundred thousand, then sure, but I, I don't know that we have that at the moment. So my initial thought is that we'd return it or, or not ask for, not ask to tap into that. I guess we already have returned it. We're not asking to re claw and back somehow. Use your profit because we already put money aside for that. And it did, one last thing is that as, um, I think it was Molly or Esther or maybe Stephen Drew pointed out, looks like we've already saved a hundred thousand dollars in the transportation budget. There's already some additional flexibility that's built into our budget because we don't have everyone back full time.
And again, we just wanted to bring it to you as an option, since it's an option on the table.
We appreciate it. Pat, Patty or Dawn?
Yeah, when is the deadline for making this decision?
Um, so to pull back for the DOE for the emergency or number thirty-eight has to be before the tax rate set, which typically happens in the next few weeks.
You basically have to make a decision tonight about whether to write a letter or have an emergency meeting in, within the next two-week window.
Dawn?
Um, I'm sort of just taking it all in. I don't have a comment at the moment. I mean, I'm still thinking about it.
But my, my thought is simply that we, we've set aside an enormous amount of money between the five hundred thousand. We pre, also went one to one and we still return money to the taxpayers. I, I would really not want to raise taxes in a recession, which is what that would do. Is that, I mean, if we have to make a decision now, which sounds like the, we have to, we should probably most easily make one now. Does that sound good to everyone or do you want to?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to, it doesn't require a vote or a motion if you don't want to do anything. You know, if you just leave it as is, it would only require a motion if someone wanted to make a motion to write a letter and apply for some of those funds to be spent or reimbursed or whatever the right word is.
Thank you.
My, my initial reaction is similar to Neil's. That we have, not only do we have the five hundred thousand dollars, but we have another hundred thousand dollars that we've identified in the transportation budget. We have six hundred thousand dollars plus the thirty thousand dollars we spent on COVID-related expenses are potentially going to be reimbursable by the governor. But we have six hundred, essentially six hundred thousand dollars that's in a fund to deal with, um, COVID-related expenses, even with everything we spent today. I don't, unless we have a, a specific design for money, why we would need it. I, I would get nervous about ask, you know.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Um, moving on to the board report, uh, just to give the board a heads up. We continue obviously to work through, um, return to school plans. That's taking a lot of time with all of our districts. Uh, along with that though, I'm excited to talk about, we are going to start um, that review and revision of the teacher evaluation plan for SAU sixteen. And Exeter will be well represented with teachers, administrators and union representation. We do that, remember, as an SAU and then that gets presented, uh, the revision to the joint board as per the contracts. Um, the Exeter contract really lays that out, that it has to be approved by the joint board. I would hope that we would bring it to the joint board this spring. Uh, it really, we're trying to go from a deficit-based to a strength-based system of evaluation. Um, so I'm pretty excited about that appreciative stance we're going to try and take, starting with developing a portrait of an educator for SAU sixteen, similar to a portrait of a graduate that we did a few years ago. We're now going to develop a portrait of an educator. And then based on that portrait, what kinds of things do we want to look at for supervision and evaluation so that we can become that portrait of an educator and reinforce those from a strength-based perspective? So something really positive and fun. So I'm excited to start that work. Our first meeting is next week, October twenty-second. Um, that's really it between return to school. And, um, I know we had a safety meeting and I think Patty will speak to that. So I think that's it for me. My last one is the board had asked me to get some counsel on the, um, chair report that was submitted at our last meeting from Neil. I did, uh, contact the New Hampshire School Boards Association and, uh, Barrett uh, emailed back and forth with me, uh, bottom line being that, because we do not have any acceptance process for a board chair, uh, report such as an approval or a vote or a motion to accept that. We don't have a policy that says that the board votes to accept the board chair report, that he can submit his report in any form, way, shape, or, um, any meaner that the chair sees fit. So, um, it is allowed into the last public meeting minutes and is accepted as the board chair report based on legal counsel from NHSBA. Barrett.
Patrick, thank you, Esther.
Yes, you're welcome.
Oh, I just, um, wanted to comment. I have Friday comments potentially, but, uh, I never thought it was an issue of it being illegal or, or something that required separate approval. I think my concern was whether or not it was appropriate. And, and I want to say this in the nicest way because I, I don't feel any animosity towards Neil over this. It's more an issue of, um, you know, it, it was less about, just to be clear, my concern was less about whether or not Neil had a right to write an email message to, uh, the superintendent or whoever he wants to express his opinion. Of course he does. Um, I think it's the, my concern starts to be when it's entered as, uh, the chair's report. And, and Neil, I just, I'm asking you to, to think about this and consider it. And then hopefully you have been able to over the past month. Um, but it's, I think it, it becomes problematic um, when you, uh, write, uh, a, a report that essentially says, here's my interpretation of what the board decided. And let me explain why I think it's problematic. Uh, let me just to go through this quickly. Because, um, I think it's important and, um, you know, Neil's going to make his decision on whether or not he withdraws that report. I, I made that request that it be stricken or withdrawn. Um, and, and it's up to him what he's going to do. But whether he does or not, um, I think that I wanted to point out why I think it's problematic. Number one, we already have a record of what happens in our meetings. We have the vote that's, um, that's on videotape. And then we have minutes that are approved by this board and they're open to amendment if they're not accurate. So that's the first thing. Second thing is that I, I know Neil had thought there was confusion, um, but I don't really understand that still because both the superintendent and the associate superintendent were at the meeting. They heard the discussion. They didn't ask any questions about it. Um, and they, and according to Neil, when I asked this question last month, they didn't request that there be some sort of clarification that was provided. Um, so I think it was, I think the most clear, uh, record of what we have are our minutes and the video that we have. The, the third point is that I do think it creates confusion. When you have official minutes and an official motion that was approved by this board and the only authority that we have is as a board, um, and that speaks for itself. When one member goes off and writes what they, what they write in the email message as quote-unquote, "for the record", uh, their own personal interpretation of what the board decided, I think it becomes problematic, particularly when it's put under a chair's report because it seems to the public, it could seem to the public that that somehow is the, an official notice of the board when it's not. The, the, what the board has to say about what our board decided has no legal weight. The only weight is what our board decided. Um, and the last thing I'm going to say is that, um, you, you know, this is just from my New Hampshire School Board's training and I'm surprised Barrett didn't bring this up. Is that, again, we only act as a group. Uh, and there are going to be decisions that happen on this board where one of us votes in the negative, where the other members vote in the affirmative, or the three-two votes. But I think it's a best practice that once a decision is made, that we support it as a group. We can't require that. Um, it's not illegal to, to voice your discontent later. Um, but I think it's inappropriate. I don't think it really serves our community well and our board well. So for all those reasons, I've, I've asked, I wanted to raise this concern. And I still ask that I, I think it would be beneficial to our board to not have that email message as part of the formal report. So I, I'm, I wanted to say my piece about that. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to keep it. I don't want to talk about it anymore. And, and I've had enough. I'd like to move on, please.
Okay, I, I would like to add something in here because this also was concerning to me. And, and I still feel that way. And I want to make sure that that is noted in the minutes, that it's not, that I not only have concerns with it, but I do feel like it's sort of undermines the work that we're all doing here in all of these meetings. Um, and I would prefer for it not to be part of a chair's report when it actually is a personal email from Neil to David Ryan. It is not, it was all decided at the meeting. It was voted on. It's in the minutes. I don't want to spend any more time talking about this either. But I would like to say this, that this, ask that this doesn't continue in the future personally. Thank you.
Thank you, noted.
Administrative matter, anyone else? All right, administrative matters. All right, administrative matters, the minutes from September 8th, anyone looked at them? Is there a motion to approve them as presented?
Well, I don't think they're accurate. So, okay, I'm trying to find, I apologize for a moment, I'm just trying to, I have them up in here, I'm trying to find the right spot. This spot about, well, I'm not going to mend those minutes. What I'm going to ask is that.
Push it till the next meeting?
No, it's fine. I don't, I don't, we don't need to push it. I'm just going to ask, I mean, it was really around this issue that we just raised a moment ago or that I, I don't think the minutes accurately reflect the comments that were made for that. But if they're reflected in the next minutes, then I think that's going to be sufficient. And if they're not, I'll make the changes to the next minutes.
Do you want to just approve them both next time? Do you want to just hold off? I'm happy to do, I mean that.
Sure.
Maybe just wait, fine. Thank you. Esther, the straw poll vote for the Zoom meeting or the Zoom format for this meeting?
Yes, I just wanted it entered in the minutes that I did have a straw poll vote to have the Zoom format for the October 13, 2020 meeting changed to a webinar due to the volume of anticipated attendees. And that was approved and to change it to a webinar by all board members. So it was a five zero approval vote.
Thank you. I don't think there are any other administrative matters. All right, Mr. Adler, are you around? Sorry, sorry. I'm hungry too.
I'm sorry. I did take a moment to get a bite to eat.
Sorry. Do you want Drew to go? You want to keep eating?
No, I'm done. I'm, I'm good. Just a few highlights. I know you've got my report in your board packet. First and foremost, it's always nice after so many challenges and difficult times to share good news. I don't know if you get, still get my newsletter, but Kate McCaffrey, who's a second grade teacher in our school, is a semifinalist from the Hampshire Teacher of the Year. She's one of six teachers in the state of New Hampshire. I'm really excited for Kate. You know, when she talks about the whole, she was nominated last year by one of her parents. And she's gone through a pretty rigorous process of writing essays and doing videos and being interviewed. And she really has done a great job in terms of presenting. And what, the one thing that she said about her whole process was in, in her, one of her things was in that, she said in this year, remote learning, every New Hampshire teacher is a teacher of the year. And she's really a strong advocate for teachers and what they do. We're starting SO, we're going to be coming virtually with SO and sharing children's books. I want to thank Toian Augustus for that, really excited about that. The first book that will be shared in all the classrooms, all the classrooms will be having the same book right away and this could be Last Stop on Market Street. And the young man who shared it is just wonderful to watch. We'll write trust. Thank you for the support and all the, the three groups who got it have really been using the money well. We are doing assessments of students right now. We're using what's called iReady. Assessing all kindergarten, first and second grade students with math. It's an online assessment. Parents help their child at home if they're weren't learning remote. We will be, and I'll be sending out tomorrow a letter about the Powell's Assessment for Kindergarten and Literacy, which is done in person. And we will be using October 26th, 27th and 28th, I believe are the days for that. And I'll send out that letter to kindergarten parents tomorrow. And then community care centers are going well and we, every Friday, we've been having a fun Friday with a different theme. We had a sports day, we had a crazy sock day. And lastly, just want to recognize the fire, Exeter Fire Department who shared a video with Main Street School about fire safety and the role of firefighters. So we still manage to do some of the programs that are dear to us and find ways to do those virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Adler? All right, Mr. Berstow.
All right. A lot of similarities between Lincoln and Main Street as, as usual. We too are doing, or in the process or have finished doing iReady assessments. The staff is working through, understanding this new assessment and will be getting those reports out to parents and families at the end of the month, just in time for parent teacher conferences on November 3rd. We are just starting our library pickup and exchange started October 6th. And so, so walk up, it's almost like an ice cream ordering booth. They walk up to a window, exchange a book. It's, so thanks to Ms. Samson for making that happen. And I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the Are You In card program while I have the floor here. So this is a program that offers qualified students an opportunity to register for memberships and programs by showing their card to partner organizations rather than having to ask for financial assistance or fill out additional income or financial paperwork each and every time they're interested in a program. Lots of local programs participate in this, including the YMCA, Seahawks Football, Girls on the Run. So the ways that you can enroll an eligible student are, first of all, if you are, you are eligible if you qualify for free and reduced lunch. You need to send the acceptance letter to the key collective P O box, which is 149. P O box 149 in Exeter. You can go to the areyouincard.org website, fill out the online signup form and upload your student's free and reduced lunch program acceptance letter and click the submit button. Or if you have a qualified school validator, which is a school nurse, guidance counselor, principals, assistant principals, et cetera, they can request a card on your behalf. So this is a really incredible program that we have in this community. And we just want to try and spread the word and get people to register if they're available. So those kids can have access to some activities that are around the, the school. And I, and I believe the number of activities are expanding as time goes on. There's more and more groups that are participating in this.
I could just highlight that for just for a second. I remember hearing about that a few years ago and that program seems to have grown nicely. And it's, I think it's important to point out, it's a, it's a particularly important or potentially really important tool with respect to equity. That is, it could be a leveler for a lot of kids in a lot of ways. It's very, and I think didn't Dr. Johnson, wasn't she involved in it and the wellness committee and all that stuff? I think that's right. Thank you.
And just one last detail, we at Lincoln Street School with the staff are working through our building goals and personal goals and getting those underway. Just wanted to highlight really quickly, our building goals are very, very similar to last year as we're continuing to work through a lot of the same features for working on competency-based education, of course, restorative justice and universal design for learning. So I just wanted to highlight those things, but in the interest of time, I will keep my comments brief.
Yes, right. Thank you. Members' report, Don Bones.
Hey, um, uh, thank you. I just would like to back up here for one minute if you would allow us to. I'm getting a number of questions from the community if we're voting on this return to school plan. And I just wanted to sort of go on record and say that we've, we voted previously to support the administration and the plan and that we are not taking a vote tonight. The return to school plan is the school plan. And that is what is going to be expected to be rolled forward, given survey results and whatnot. There's a lot of people who are still waiting for us to make a decision about this. If there's anything else that Esther or Neil or Drew, Steve would like to add into that.
Nope, that's exactly right. No vote required.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other committee reports at this time. We haven't met.
All right, thank you. Sarah Edwards.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that I'm not on the D E I J committee this year. I was last year and I, you know, was honored to be part of, part of that group in its first year. I'm on enhanced learning, which I believe Drew, maybe you can confirm, we haven't met because the focus so much has been on remote learning and the teachers coordinating on that.
That's correct.
Okay. The policy committee has not met. Patrick and I are both on that. And Dr. Ryan reaches out to us when there's imperative policy that impacts decision-making for our community. Patrick, you want to confirm? We just haven't met this season quite yet. And then the, the last one is negotiations and that is in more detail. And Patrick, I'm looking to you to see if you, and I want to team up together to present that or if you want to take the lead.
So I think what would be helpful is if we could have a non-public session to have an initial discussion and that's covered. I don't have the R C in front of me, but it's covered related to negotiations that you can have a non-public discussion about that. But depending on how that discussion goes, there may be a need to have a public session as well to, you know, regarding voting on a potential negotiated agreement.
Patrick and I did meet with the negotiation team for several, quite, quite a few hours. And so we would have information to share in non-public.
It was a four hour meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was four plus.
So it was very, it was very productive and people were great as students.
Going to non-public at the end of this, right? Is there anything else, Sarah?
That's online. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
So I will take the D I J component from Sarah and share it with Patty. So like tagging on down the line and Patty can help me with this. But the D I J committee has met a couple of times since our last meeting. And one of the things that we talked about, which we said we would talk about at the last board meeting is about training. And the committee, they'd have an interest in there being more training. And they made a proposal that they approved within the subcommittee, but they're asked, but they've asked us to forward. Tell me if I'm doing this right, Patty, but I think they have suggested that we ask the board for up to $7,000 in funding that would fund two sessions. One would be the part two of the D I J training that we did in the summer. That would be with the committee, including the board. And then the second half would be a session that would be just with the board and an outside facilitator. So to be identified. So is that right, Patty? Did I, did I get that right?
Correct.
So, so I wanted to make that proposal tonight and certainly, but before I do, I can, I don't know if there are questions about it or if I can provide more details. Essentially, the first half again was, they always thought of it, the vision, it would be with visions. The first half, the same group that did the training with us over the summer in June. And it would essentially be, may or may not be the same facilitators, but it'd be in the same model using both the guidelines and other tools that they have and introducing some new tools to continue that work. And again, it wouldn't be limited to the board, it'd be pick a date that would include as many of the community members as possible so that they could benefit from that as well. And then a second session that would be smaller, that wouldn't necessarily be a visions person per se, but it would be a focus on the guidelines and how to use the guidelines effectively in our group. But also anything else that we thought would be appropriate and helpful to focus on during that, that shorter session that would be just with a half a dozen of us, say. The, the board members, possibly Esther, she wanted to attend and is available. I know she's looking for more meetings to go to and, and the facilitator and maybe a second facilitator. So that's the gist of it.
Excuse me, Patrick or Patty, is there like a timeline for this? I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I missed that. When the training might be.
So they had suggested, the committee had suggested it'd be helpful to do part two of the training this fall. So, you know, possibly in November to be realistic about it. I mean, we're already in, in, you know, mid-October, it takes some lead time. So sometime, you know, between now and Thanksgiving to do part two of, of that group on a convenient day. And then the board piece would, would occur after that. Depending on how late in the year, you know, it happened in November, it may not happen until January, February. But it would happen after that.
Comments? I mean, it sounds good to me. Patty, Sarah, Dawn?
No, I just think that, I know everyone's, we're all overwhelmed with so many different decisions, but there's been a lot of momentum around this committee and the work that's happening. And I just want to make a commitment to them that we have, have a placeholder for a certain amount of money so that we can then find the training that's suitable and, and keep moving this forward. So I don't know if that, does that require a motion tonight and a vote?
Neil, can I just speak for a second? I know Chris Andruski has been tasked with kind of organizing all the D E I J. All the schools have their own committees now when we're doing, organizing training for administrators and schools, et cetera, as well as working with Toian to work with our curriculum committee, but curriculum coordinators of all the schools. So he's working through that kind of master plan and what that will look like this week with Toian and two rev our other D E I J trainers that Lincoln and Main Street have used. So I would just ask that I be able to share that with you or if Chris is going to share that with all the boards in our next board report. So you just have a good vision of what we're doing as an SAU and what training we're doing and see how this all fits in nicely with that. So that would just be, just more work in this area for sure.
So Patrick, what do you want us to do? We were, we had a separate meeting that was with Patty and I, and I think it was with and we talked about that, we talked about two rev, we talked about visions, we talked about the overall calendar. We talked about the big scheme of things. So there's both a full committee meeting and also a separate meeting that looked at just training. And that subgroup felt that, you know, even though there's bigger things that are going on within the S A U and they're aware of the two rev work that happened in the fall, that they felt that it was important to have the second part. That's the, the subcommittee's recommendation is to have that, that part two with the visions group to finish, to have some continuity with what they're doing and to finish that work. And then going forward, I think that, that groups understood that it may make more sense to work with two rev because it's more economical model, there may be other training models that would, that would work going forward. But they wanted to have us continue to do that work, so.
Patrick, what do you want from us tonight? Do you want us to motion or do, what do you want to do?
Yeah, I would ask for a motion to approve up to $7,000 to do two training sessions. One with the full committee and the second with just the board. You know, and potentially then Esther, if she wanted, if she wanted to as well, but with the smaller group.
I'll make a motion to put aside up to $7,000 for D E I J.
D I J training, yeah.
Yeah, I J training. And I think it was super helpful. And I think, I do think it's important to sort of stay with that model that we, that we did over the summer. And, but again, I would like to see us connect with Chris Andruski and, or whether it via through Toian or whatnot, just to kind of align as we move forward.
I would like to second that.
I would like to second that. As the team has invested so much already in this process.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts? Patty, anyone? All right. So roll call vote. Tom Bones.
Hi.
Sarah Edwards.
Hi.
I think you said, I couldn't hear you, Patty. I assume you said yes. You're not coming. Patrick Guday is yes. Patty Surratt.
Yes.
Neil Blacken's yes. All right. Thank you. Patrick, anything else?
Just, can you hear me? I think I, I think we tried to coordinate dates offline, so we don't need to do that during this meeting tonight.
Patty Surratt?
Yeah, one quick update. I have another subcommittee from this committee is the affinity groups that were started this past month. We had, I'm running one with Maryam Levy and we had nearly 20 participants in the anti-racist white ally affinity group. And we're having our next one this, their Wednesday and Thursday because we had so many people, we broke it into two different groups to make it a more thoughtful conversation. So that was exciting to see the enthusiasm and the willingness to engage this discussion. So that was exciting.
Great. Thank you. I have nothing to report. Is there any old business?
Well, we didn't do the safety and security committee.
Sorry, my fault.
And I just took it down. I had it up. I actually wasn't there. So Esther, do you want to just give the tidbits?
Sure. We just kind of reviewed all the safety and security. We've done our own COVID-19 in our school buildings, which I don't need to reiterate. As you all are very familiar with those across the S A U. We are going to do a COVID response tabletop with Paul Gravel from P E A. He's gonna come in and he's worked with Rich Kane and they have created a scenario and it happens to involve Lincoln and Main Street. So yay for us. We're gonna do that tabletop, which will be a great experience for us just about, I don't know what they're going to throw at us, but something to do with COVID-19 pandemic response, probably around positive cases and how to manage that, et cetera, et cetera. So that's coming up and it was well attended. It was shorter because there was no fruit parfaits for our guests to eat. So that, that shortened the meeting. We continue to, we did the Alice Fesher course with all of our employees across S A U 16. We did offer that to the substitutes that came for training, that if they wanted to that, they could also do the Alice training. So just continuing along our next meeting, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it's in January. So I will send that out again as that gets closer.
Yep, it's January 28th.
Thank you. January 28th. So, yeah, working, working hard to keep things safe in just a little bit different venue right now.
All right, Patty, anything else or is that it?
That's it for me. Thanks.
I have nothing. Is there any old business we have to talk about? I think not. Any new business? Sounds like no. Patrick or whoever, do you want to make a motion to go to non-public on whatever the RSA is?
Yeah, I don't have.
Esther has.
It's RSA 91A3 and we're going to go in under actually A and E, A and E. We have a personnel issue as well as negotiations.
I assume the way this works is we'll vote to go into non-public. Everyone else can leave. Is it? Who has to stay, Patrick? Is it just the board or does, you want Esther and the Stephen Drew to stay or?
I don't think Steve and Drew need to stay. I do think there's a possibility, just so people are aware that we would come out of non-public and go back into public.
Right.
Did you, did you want me to stay for the personnel issue, Esther?
I, I was going to say, I would, I would ask that Steve stay for the personnel issue. And we can do that first and then we can leave if you want to talk about negotiations after.
Sounds good. Patrick, if you want to make a motion?
I move that we go into public on, based on the beginning with the RSA, RSA 91A3. You A, you E, right?
Yes.
All right. Roll call vote. Tom Bones.
Hi.
Sarah Edwards.
Hi, sorry.
That's right. Patrick Guday.
Yes.
Patty Surratt.
Hi.
Neil Blacken's eye. Thank you all who are leaving. Sorry to keep you so late, but thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I just want to wait till all the attendees clear.
Were you able to kick attendees out, so to speak?
I am now.
Are we still recording? I think we're still recording, right? Look, now Patrick, how do we do the voting in the, in public with the?
That's okay. So why, I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposed memorandum of agreement for health and safety. That includes the allocation of 100, up to 100 sick days to add to the association sick pay.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Tom Bones.
Hi.
Sarah Edwards.
Hi.
Patrick Guday.
Hi.
Patty Surratt.
Hi.
Hi, for Neil Blacken. All right. That's it.
Neil, once that, once the association approves it, then you would sign on behalf of the board. I'm, I'm not sure what the status is of the association, but once both sides agree, then we also have to clean up the just the version.
Formatting.
Some of the formatting, the numbering, there was a little typo error that was in there. We'll get it cleaned up.
You guys are on those ships. So thank you. Thanks for doing all that. That's great work. Thank you very much. All right. Good night all. Thanks, Esther.
Good night.
Thank you.